I'd like to call to order the Tiverton Town Council meeting of Monday, July 24th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Ms. Mello?
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor LaBeau.
Yep.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Shavitt.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Thank you. Business brought before the council consent agenda. For CA 1A, regular -- approval of regular session meeting minutes of June 26, 2017. 1B, approval of executive session meeting minutes of March 27, 2017. CA 2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. 2A Cemetery Commission. 2B Casino Subcommittee 2. 2C Board of Canvassers 3. 2D Planning Board 5. CA 3, correspondence received and filed. 3A Smithfield Town Council. Resolution in support of adoption of legislation that provides reimbursement for cost of municipal police training academy. 3B Stuart Hardy regarding appointment of Susan Gill to Planning Board. 3C Robert Martin regarding appointment of Susan Gill to Planning Board. 3D Roger Belanger regarding council support for neighbors of Twin River Tiverton. 3E Town Administrator from Attorney Benson regarding Twin River Casino environmental due diligence. CA 4, approval of tax assessor abatements. Are there any items that the council wishes to remove for further discussion?
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards?
CA 3A.
CA 3A?
Yes.
Any others? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Anonymous. Ms. Edwards, 3A.
Thank you. This resolution, I think, is a good resolution. It's obvious that Smithfield is having some similar issues that the town of Tiverton has with regards to our police force. And I would respectfully ask that this be something that the council take a look at adopting as well. Maybe something for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Do I have a motion to approve CA?
I'll make a motion.
...town council resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Anonymous. Thank you. Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. A5-1, William McLaughlin and several Tiverton businesses regarding budget decisions. Ms. McLaughlin?
That's Madam President. Give me a second here. Hi, my name's Bill McLaughlin. I'm here tonight as representative of a number of the businesses in the town of Tiverton. This town has earned a well-deserved reputation for being the most unfair, unfriendly business center in the entire state of Rhode Island. Almost without exception, these businesses have been harassed, hindered, or harmed by town policies and practices. But despite this, we each continue to persevere in this town, not simply as a business, but members of the community. A community with strong values and unflinching civic pride. Recently, we learned that the town budget committee had cut $100,000 from the budget to give us an 11-cent tax break. Works out to $4 per person on the average taxpayer. An amount that can hardly be considered tax relief by any stretch of the term. I'm personally offended, as are many others, by this meaningless tax reduction. While we all understand that fixing the town's financial problems is a daunting task, we believe whatever small good is intended from trimming this minuscule amount from the budget will have negative lasting repercussions in many ways. Now, I understand full well that I'm not an expert in corporate or municipal finances, but it's also my understanding that not a single representative of the budget committee has a comparable degree. Apparently, the balancing of a home budget and the use of a Ouija board endows them with the ability sufficient to run the town budget. But I'm here to argue that these cuts to the budget are not considering the things that are vital to fostering community values, civic pride that we each hold dear. These short-sighted trimmings for the sake of being able to claim that taxes have been reduced will impact our ability to pass on our sense of civic pride and responsibility to our children. One of the many programs we're told being cut by this meaningless tax break is the local garden club. It's an inexpensive, though significant contribution they make to this community. While I do not personally know the members that volunteer their time and effort to show their civic pride by planting flowers, shrubs, all around the town, but I see the impact of their generous deeds, their efforts to create beautiful spaces for residents and visitors, spaces that allow all the people who live here to share in the sense of pride. It's difficult to drive past one of their works and not get a light-hearted feeling of pride for the community. This is one of the rare organizations in this town whose efforts truly benefit the entire town, not simply a few. And they do all this with a measly $500 a year budget and through other small donations. Because the town is not going to contribute to their efforts based that they no longer can afford it, and because the town does not realize that it would cost tens of thousands of dollars to duplicate their efforts, and especially because the town doesn't seem to comprehend the value in return for the services to the taxpayer. We, the local businesses that I will mention, have stepped in to show our pride and support for this community. These businesses have made donations of $100 each for a total of $1,300, which we want given to the town to supplement the town budget for the line item, garden club, in the budget. All monies are to be given to the garden club for their projects in this community. Ace Construction donated, Paquins Insurance, Sabatato's Pizza, Duran's Kawasaki Motorsports, Humphrey's Building Supplies, JDH Landscaping Materials, Aquidnic Foundation, Family Ties Restaurant, Sakonnet River Outfitters, Mack Marine Maintenance, the Star Riders Motorcycle Club, and Tiverton Auto Parts. While the town may have lost its civic pride in the ability to understand what's truly important, our community has not, and these businesses certainly have not, by the contribution they make to the community. I would like to thank each of them for their efforts and their generous donations to do the right thing for this community when the town fails to. As a representative of the businesses tonight, I'd also like to thank the garden club for their continued efforts to make the town of Tiverton a better and more beautiful place. I believe there's some of the garden club there tonight, ladies, if you would stand and recognize, please. (applause). I'd like to turn over to you, Madam President. There's $1,300 to be given to the garden club for their efforts in this town. I'm sure you can get it to the right places. Thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you so much.[524.16][524.16](applause).
Madam President.
Ms. DiMederos?
Just for the record, and I think this is a generous thing that the businesses did, and I thank everyone, but just for the record, the garden club requested $500 this year, and they received $500. They were not cut. They were one of the --
They haven't received the dime I just spoke to.
Well, it's in the budget, Mr. McLaughlin. If they want the $500, they can get the $500. So I just want to make that clear, that the town council did appreciate the garden club. It's budgeted $500, what they requested. Thank you.
Also, Madam President, I believe the garden club is a private entity that receives a grant from the town, so if the businesses want to give to the garden club, the appropriate mechanism would be for the businesses to give the money directly to the garden club without having the town essentially serve a function that's not needed. So if Mr. McLaughlin wants to take his check back and --
There's no law against putting money into the town budget for a line item. You show it to --
Well, it's not an appropriation or a revenue generation to the town, so I don't -- the town can't accept the money except through a legal recognized mechanism, but Mr. McLaughlin can certainly contribute that to the garden club, which is a separate entity from the town, so.
Now, unfortunately, some of these are made out to the town of Tiverton.
Every one of them's made out to the town of Tiverton.
I think --
Show me the law so that I can put money in the town budget.
Hold on.
(inaudible). When you force us off, you're paying the town budget for volunteering, you're leaving out.
We're not saying no. It's just that the garden club is an independent entity. It's not actually part of the town. We don't -- they're an independent charity, and they do fabulous work, and the town gives them every year. The money that we give them is a grant or a stipend, and they were given their stipend request this year, but --
No, they weren't. The ladies are right here.
Well, I'm -- it is in the budget, whether or not they've --
It was two weeks ago when I looked at mine, it was some sort of shenanigans law.
No, there's no shenanigans. Their line item is in the budget.
Ms. DiMederos, Ms. Hilton, please. If we could, we will take the matter in hand, and we'll have the town administrator deal with the situation and come to a resolution. I'm certain that the garden club will get the appropriate funds that have been collected by these charitable businesses in town. We do appreciate their donations. I'm sure the garden club certainly appreciates their donations, as well as we appreciate the garden club's efforts to beautify the town and make that contribution to the community of Tiverton. This is all about community, and I think you have to understand that. We are one community. Whatever happened with the budget, happened with the budget, and we'll live through this year, and the town administrator will manage to the budget that was approved at the Financial Town referendum. And I want to stress that. It was approved by the voters at that referendum. So, again, we thank you for your contributions. We really appreciate the businesses stepping up and offering this charitable contribution to this group. Thank you. Next item for open forum, Linda Lawson, Tiverton Days, another community effort.
Well, since we're speaking about civic and community pride and spirit, I want to remind everyone that Tiverton Days is coming up. It's this Friday through Sunday, July 28th through 30th. Our schedule is together, and it's jam-packed, so Friday evening from 6:00 to 10:00, we'll be down at Grinnell's Beach. We'll be having a bonfire, food, music, as well as a lighted flotilla, so 6:00 to 10:00 down at Grinnell's. Saturday morning, we'll be having our town parade down Main Road. That steps off at 10:00, and it runs from the end of Judson Street there, so basically Family Ties, and it ends at Lil' Bear, so that steps off at 10:00. In the afternoon, at the library, we'll be having a rock and roll painting, community painting party, from 2:00 to 4:00. We'll be painting kindness rocks, as well as a piano, a community piano that will travel around the community for folks to play, and if they feel the need. Saturday night at 8:00, 8:00 to 10:00, we'll be at the Picasset Fields, so the fields behind Picasset School for an outdoor family movie. We'll be showing the animated film Sing, so come out and take a look at that. So that's at 8:00. And then Sunday morning, for those early risers, we'll be at Rebecca Grinnell's Beach for Yoga on the Beach with Nana Quocket Yoga Studios from 8:00 to 9:00. And those that attend will get a free cup of coffee from Coastal Roasters. And then the Tiverton Fire Department at their Main Road Station 2, 85 Main Road, will be having an open house from 10:00 to 2:00. So touch a truck, come meet the firemen, take a photo, see the equipment. They'll also be giving free blood pressure screenings for any member, any community member, resident, or even visitor that comes by, as well as some safety information. So we've gotten a great response from the community, from our residents, as well as our businesses. We have raised all of the funds necessary to cover all of the costs for Tiverton Days, so we've had some great outpouring of support. We're keeping our fingers crossed for good weather and a great turnout, and all are welcome to attend, and we certainly look forward to seeing you all. So you can check out our Facebook page, which is Tiverton Days, or our website, tivardondays.org, for a list of schedule and events. So, thank you.
And if there's any cancellations, also, that would be on the website and Facebook?
The website, as well as the Facebook, for any kind of weather cancellations, but we're not planning any weather cancellations, so we don't look at the weather until, you know, shortly before Friday evening, when my fire department head back there is staring at me, saying, you know, "Got to light this bonfire or not," so we're hoping for the best.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
And we hope that the residents of Tiverton will get out there and support each of these activities and have some fun.
Okay.
Thank you. Renee Jones, Planning Board?
Hi, Renee Jones, 161 Highland Road, Tiverton. Actually, before I talk about the planning board, Mr. McLaughlin?
I want to thank you, and I want to give you my -- I hope that I can touch base with you, because I'm on the Economic Development Commission, and I'd like to be in touch with all the businesses that you just mentioned. That sounds like a great organization, so if you could all touch base, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Just a quick note about the planning board. All I wanted to say was, I know there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, and one of my concerns is when we're looking for people that are going to be on the planning board, you know, it's great to have people that work in the town, and I'm not saying anything against anything one way or the other, but one of the factors that people need to consider is also if people have done work with people in the town. One of the problems that has come up, that I see as a problem on the planning board, is that there are people that have associations with people in town that have to recuse themselves from major discussions on the planning board. This happened just this year, when Melissa Hutchinson had to recuse herself from one of the largest discussions that was before this planning board because of the large housing development that's going up on Souza Road. And I just want to just make, you know, that's just one factor, and that's all I wanted to say, that when you're looking for people for the planning board, to make sure that, yes, we all want qualified people, but, you know, people that will be able to be on the planning board and provide decisions without having to recuse themselves because of associations, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings and presentations. B1, approval of proposed amendments to fee resolution. 1A, proposed planning board fees. 1B, proposed DPW landfill fees. And 1C, proposed recreation and beach fees.
I think they're each going to come up in turn for any questions you may have.
Good evening. Hi, I'm for the planning board. There's a couple of things with the fee schedule that's -- we did some adjustment with them this year. We did it after we reviewed six or eight other municipalities of comparable size. So some of the things you'll see that are different, we added the pre-application concept plan fee that we haven't had previously. And then the other biggest change was, we broke up for major and minor subdivisions and land developments, the three different sections of master, preliminary, and final plan. We priced them a little different based on what a lot of other communities were doing to try and make some corrections in the fee structures, so that we were more in line with what other communities were charging. I don't know if you have any questions about any of those. We didn't really adjust anything on the lower third of the page, but we did increase a few, because we found that the amount of time that we're putting in, like to develop a plan review, and even administrative subdivision, pre-concept plan, we weren't really recouping anything on those fees, so, although it was time to make some adjustment.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards?
Thank you. My only question's regarding the engineer review fee.
Right, I was going to do that next.
Okay, because I didn't see it.
Yeah, that's the next sheet.
Is it on the back, or?
There should be a second sheet.
Engineer review sheet. That's on the back. They have to.
Yeah. Yeah, it says engineer review escrow.
B1, oh, it was --
So with the escrows, these were presented by steer engineering. There are numbers that they recommended, and we did some adjustments with those this year. After I had a meeting with the town administrator, you noticed that there were a few, I guess, in the title, and like three places in the body of it, I was still referring to it as fees, and realized we should change that to escrow or retainer, so that it's very clear to the applicants that pay these fees, or this money, that it's returned whatever the balance is at the end of their project. So a fee is not refundable, whereas a retainer, any balance at the end is returned to them. Oh, and then, so then, that was one correction. So I think I gave it to Nancy what our revisions were, to take the word "fee" out of it. And then the other thing that we did was realizing that instead of a flat fee, that on some of these, it would be better to have a range, because depending on the size of the development and the complexity of the review status, that rather than having a single retainer amount, to have a range. So like for a, let's see, like a major subdivision, it has a master plan anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000, depending on the amount, like the size of development, it's adjustment. So it gives the administrative officer that collects the fees some discretion. Again, any funds that are used by the end of it are returned. But the other main thing we did with this is we divided it up into master, preliminary, and final also, because the way it's been set up for a number of years was that it was just one retainer and one fee that was set at the beginning, and then that carried through all the different stages, all three stages of the plan. So we thought, too, by dividing those up, that if we had to collect retainers along the way, or if someone didn't complete it all the way to the final plan, it just seemed like a better system to do it at the different stages, instead of a one-time fee at the beginning and a one-time collection of a retainer, so that we're not chasing people throughout the course of the project. I don't know if that makes sense, but, and then I guess that's it. So, yeah, these were recommended fees by the engineer.
Madam President, there might be some confusion, because I know what's in the packet, and I assume that is not what Sue was talking to. So I think there was a, on the engineer review escrow, I think that is not, what she's talking to is not the current, or that is the current, what you have in your packet is not correct.
I don't know. Nancy, did you give them the updated one, then, or no?
I think I gave them the one that was --
Oh, okay, okay. So that was the other, to explain that, was the original one was the one that the planning board had approved, like about four months ago. So our discussion was just last week, and it was too late to post it or have the planning board re-vote on it. So if any of these changes that you approved tonight would be at your discretion, they weren't changed by the planning board. I don't know. I thought Nancy was passing them out. So I guess for the minor subdivision land development, I'd had a range of 2,000 to 5,000 is what I was proposing, rather than just the flat 2,000. The major subdivision at a master plan was a range of 3,000 to 5,000. Preliminary plan was 5,000 to 10,000. The final plan was 1,500 to 2,500. And you see, like a big project like the casino, if we asked them for 2,000 or 3,000, basically every month or every couple of weeks, we probably would have to be going back to them, asking them for more funds. So it was a way to just kind of stay ahead of the game a little better. And I guess site plan review commercial, for less than 10,000 square feet, I had proposed 2,500 to 5,000, and for greater than 10,000, 4,000 to 7,500. For the business park, 5,000 to 7,500, and 7,500 to 10,000. And for the condominium projects was 5,000 to 10,000, and 10,000 to 15,000. And the as-built plan was 750 to $1,000. So I did give it to Nancy. I thought we would get distributed, sorry.
We agreed. I'm sorry, Sue. I thought we agreed to what they voted on, and that's why I --
Oh.
-- put that form.
No, yeah. Yeah, the single numbers are what the planning board approved, but I guess what we were asking was to, if you want to consider some leeway to create ranges for the upcoming year. It's up to you.
So can I, can you just repeat? What was the preliminary plan?
I can, I can.
We've got, you started at 10,000 for multi-house condominium project?
That was 10 to 15.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, all right. So I thought you had that in front of you. And then the one other thing that I did come across this weekend, I was just kind of going through the resolutions of fines and fees. Oh, yeah, yeah. Thanks. The resolutions of fines and fees. We had talked about at one point the soil erosion and sediment control plans review. We had talked about it, doing it under the escrow account, and then because the engineer couldn't really come up with a fixed amount, or a good schedule for that, we just eliminated it. But then I came up on it in page six of the resolution for fines and fees. It was the, it says a fee schedule determined and posted by the planning board, and it doesn't look like, I don't know how many years that's been on the books, but apparently that's never been acted on. And what we've been finding now that we're being more active with that, sometimes it's done by Bill Anderson from DPW, sometimes then it goes to steer engineering, depending on the situation. It basically involves site plan review, it involves usually a visit to the site, and then there's a report, and sometimes follow-up. So we felt like, since this is already built in here, that it would be appropriate to set a fee schedule to cover the DPW director for the amount of work. I spoke to him today, and he was going to discuss that, I guess, with you tonight. He was going to review maybe what some other towns were charging, and what he felt was a fair fee structure.
Sue did give me that as well, but I thought what I was supposed to put in the packet was what was actually voted, and she was going to amend, request amendments to these tonight.
Right.
So that's why that wasn't part of this, but I should have put it in.
Any questions from the council on the engineer review escrow?
I have one question.
Ms. Hilton?
Since, did these need to be published in order for us to vote on them? So the --
So, just so I understand, the fees that were voted on by the planning board were published, and I believe the advertisement just directed the public to the town clerk's office where the fee schedule was available? So was this available in the --
Oh, yes, that's always been available.
Okay. So if both versions were available, then you can --
Hold on. Just checking.
Okay.
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards?
Thank you. I guess the question I have, and forgive me for being ignorant of this, but these are the engineering escrow fees that some of these monies could go to steer, some of the monies could go to compensate Director Anderson. How is that determination made?
No, these are set up all for steer, or if we had other outside consultants, say for peer review, but primarily our consultant that draws from these fees is steer engineering.
So if Director Anderson is out, for instance, doing any of this, then there's really no fees to the town?
No, I don't think he would fall, and he's a town employee, so he wouldn't fall under our consultant review fee, no.
That's correct. So our engineer doesn't get reimbursement to his accounts for this. However, at any given project, he may have a need to draw upon steer ad hoc, in which case there would be an escrow. case there would be an, an escrow that he could draw upon if the project warranted it.
Okay, I guess the question that I have is about, when we talk about the soil erosion control stuff, if he's our dedicated erosion person and he's doing all the work, do we truly need to specify a fee for that?
Well, I think that's the point. He's not doing all the work. He doesn't have the capacity to do all the soil erosion inspections for, for every project that we have going right now.
Well, I guess the way it would be set up is, is the ones that he does, like say for a single-family home or a small development or the ones that he feels that he can handle, you know, that would, that would go, or the ones that go through the building office, that would have a fee attached to it. Whereas if like, say, a larger subdivision or a land development project came through the planning board, that's when he'd have the option to designate steer engineering, like he's done with the casino, and then steer would draw on an escrow account. It's a way to, to bill the applicant for the work and it seems reasonable that, that the larger projects that consume a lot of time should be done by being paid for by the applicant rather than supported by the town.
So, I guess I just have one follow-up question then. So, is it the planning board that has the discretion to determine how much time steer spends on any one given escrow account? So, like if you say, like so, for instance, if it's a preliminary plan for the multi-house condominium project, 10,000 to 15,000, let's say the planning board specifies 15,000, how, how are we determining how much of that 15,000 is being spent? Is that coming direct at the discretion of the planning board? Is that the discretion of the administrative officer for the planning board?
Well, they would be directed usually to do site plan review. So, they write up a report. Then, if they're doing stormwater, that involves observation reports on, observation visits, reports, participating in meetings, giving us verbal reports they do, or like environmental review statements if they review a site plan. It's usually a matter of a site plan, site visits and reports that they file. So, if it's, if it's something that the planning board's considering, then usually if, it would be up to, since Bill's been designated, the soil erosion control designee, then he would pass it on or designate steer to do it through the, through the planning board. It's, it seems like the smaller projects would stay under his purview.
Well, I guess, maybe I phrased it incorrectly. What I'm asking is, what are the controls to make sure that steer isn't billing people unnecessarily? So, you know, if we say we specify this range and it, you know, it's 10,000 to 15,000 and the planning board decides, well, you know, developer A is going to spend 15,000 but developer B is only going to spend 10, you know, and how do we, how do we make sure that steer is not going out and just doing $15,000 worth of work when really maybe only 10 or $7,500 worth of work needed to be done?
Well, they're designated what they're supposed to do. Usually, it's roadway, stormwater and that sort of thing. They're not just doing anything and everything and, and being hired as a professional consultant, we rely on them to know what the parameters are for when they need to go to the site and what kind of reports they need to, to write up. They're not just going out there to go out there. There's very strict guidelines, like if there's, you know, depending on rainfall, then they have to do inspections for drainage, stormwater runoff, you know, they have, they have guidelines. They are, they are, they're professional engineers and they, we try, rely on them to know what they're doing and they do it and they submit their bills.
Madam President. One, one issue with the, the range for escrows is that it, it's problematic to have a fee schedule that has a discretionary aspect to it without an explicit method for calculating that. And what that could open up the town to is the town says, developer A, you pay 5,000, developer B, you pay 10,000. Now, they may have a good discretionary reason for that, but the developer B is going to come in and say, you're discriminating against me. I don't think I should have to pay a 10,000 escrow. So, if there is going to be a, a sliding scale, there would have to be some type of formula to calculate, you know, X number of units equals X amount of escrow. So, that way, the discretion is sort of taken out of it just because it could lead to problems down the line.
Madam President.
I agree that it would lead to issues. That was the question I had on this. How do you determine what part of that scale, whether it's 2,000 to 5,000, how do you determine whether it's 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000? How do you determine that? But I think my, my question on, if Mr. LeBeau can just wait a second, this engineer review escrow, I don't see in the fee schedule as it currently exists or did I miss it?
So, the, the current practice for the planning board is that the board is allowed to obtain peer reviews and, and bill applicants for that, but the town has been fronting the costs and then chasing applicants after the fact, which, you know, sometimes it's difficult to get the money after the fact. So, this is actually a new proposal from the planning board, which would allow the board to have some money upfront so that they could pay for the peer review and then not have to chase an applicant after the fact to pay for the peer review. So, this, this is a new.
We put this in place last year. This is the second year.
Right, okay. I apologize. So, this is the second.
But did it come before the council before?
Yes, last year. Yeah, last year.
Madam President, this fee schedule, you know, it originally originated in my office years back, but the last two times you received it, it came from the administrator. So, I had to take what I could and put it together as I could. So, this is not all complete as far as, I went back, took minutes, did as best I could, but I still have to review it. It was difficult to get, it was difficult to get all the information to put down there. So, this is kind of a work in process if you didn't see everything on that.
What makes it difficult is to understand what the current fees are and what are you asking us to change is, is my concern. So, like I see on this resolution sheet, it says $100 for admin subdivision, no new lots. It says $100 is the current fee. On the new document from the planning board, it says the fee is 200.
Right.
So, I can certainly see that, it's in black and white. And then, when it comes to the next set of items, I don't, it doesn't necessarily match up to what's existing in the fee schedule. So, it makes it difficult to understand what impact this will have on applicants.
Madam President, if I can suggest maybe for this one, because I know DPW's does have that comparison in a moment, maybe we can continue this one and we can get this annotated for you for next time around.
That's certainly an option. Any other questions from the council?
Yes.
Ms. LeBeau.
I'd like to know who decides on who gets, where the planning board decides who pays escrow and who doesn't. So, if there's a drainage system going in on private land that the town will never own, why would they get? Why do they have to have escrow money put in for engineers when it's not the town's issue and it never will be the town's issue? So, the question is basically, if somebody's building a development, they're going to put storm drains in, the town will never own those roads. Why do they have to put money upfront? And it's been brought to my attention that that has happened and it's not on town property. So, I guess it's a question for the attorney. Somebody has to draw a line and say, you know what, enough's enough. If it's a development that the town is going to own, I can understand fees and make sure that things are done properly. But if it's not, then we need a clarification. Why, why do taxpayers have to put money upfront to pay something that's never going to be the town's problem? Longplex, for instance.
Well, Mr. Squares, if you.
So, it sounds like part of that is a policy issue of how much do you, when do you think it's appropriate to charge an escrow to an applicant? But the other part is that there's a distinction between the maintenance escrow, which could be something going in after the fact to make sure you put the top coat on the road, the town road that's going in. But these escrows are for, just for review. So, if an application comes in and, in an instance where it's a private drainage system, but the applicant would put in a, an escrow, the planning board may say, well, we think that this is important to get a peer review on this because it could cause flooding onto another person's property. The applicant at that point could say, I don't think you need a peer review for that. I don't think you should do it. And then, they could voice that concern. And then, ultimately, whether the planning board can do it or not is governed by the particular application and the subdue regulations.
So, it's not the town that pays the escrow, it's the developer?
Correct.
The, the person who's applying with a development project.
Right, I understand that. But some of these developments that come in have nothing to do with the town. And it, what they want to do, the town wants X amount of dollars, say $90,000 for a drainage system to engineer a drain, a drainage system that's been engineered already. It's not the town's problem if it works or not. If it doesn't work, then they don't get their COs. And these people, I know what you're going to, you want to draw out of there to have another engineer check another engineer's work and it, it gets tiring. That's why we can't get businesses in this town.
Ms. Jimadiras?
I'm trying to explain this a different way, but I don't. I think what it is, Randy, is if they feel that this development might interfere with town-owned property, like going into main road, and correct me if I'm wrong, the planning board then, our engineer, review it to make sure that there won't be a problem with, with the town property or neighboring property. Am I right, Susan?
Right.
Okay, that's why, that's the only reason why, just to make sure that what they're doing isn't going to infringe on other people's rights.
Right, and I understand all that, but $90,000 is more than the original engineering was on this particular project and they wanted to escrow that. You look at it and you say, okay, it's not going to happen, leave the guy alone. That's just.
We're talking about a specific property you're talking about.
Well, because I had a complaint about one, yes. I understand that we need to make sure these contractors finish the roads, finish the drain, do their top coat, not leave us stuck all the time like they do. But it's just the private people I'm concerned about. Small developments who don't have $90,000 to throw in an escrow, they can barely get through what they're doing and they're getting hammered every chance they get. Everything's all about a fee and a raise in the fee and it's just, the big guys get them, but the small guys, leave them alone.
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards.
If it's appropriate for the rest of the council, I'd like to make a motion to continue item B1A pending more detailed information about the differences between the existing fees in the document that we received from the clerk and what's being proposed, as well as if we're going to look at a range, the specific, I guess, algorithm or formula used to calculate the dollar amount for the escrow, escrow range.
I'll second that.
Mr. Squares, we have not opened the public hearing on this.
So, you could either continue the public hearing and allow the public to have more information or you can open it now and continue it, it's up to you.
I will open the public hearing on this particular item of planning board fees. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this at this time? Anyone from the public? Mr. Moniz?
I'll just explain the issue about stormwater drainage. Basically, this is state law by DEM and it's required that these stormwater drainages for these developers should be engineered, follow up, make sure that they're done, which takes the consultant to follow it steers and then to have a maintenance plan for the next five years. So, it's required, that's why we got a proof of these drainage projects. But your issue, I don't want to get into your issue about 90,000. To me, that's not related. I know they had a fee in the escrow, but I can't recall the amount of money. So, but there is an issue if it's over that amount and that each of you bring it back to the board. But I think you, you should continue this and really let us look at it again and see what we're doing here as a planning board and a town council to make a nice, not a nice, but a legitimate fee schedule for the town and developers.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? All right, I will, we can take these separately. So, I, if I could have a motion to continue this portion of the.
So, should I withdraw my prior motion and then make the new one?
Oh.
The motion was to continue B1A for more detailed information on the existing fees and include a formula to calculate on the.
And can you amend that to include, to continue the public hearing on that item?
Yeah, I'll, can I, I'll accept that amendment. Can I also include, actually, I'll just go, I'll accept that amendment.
And I'll second that motion again.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Next item is 1B, proposed DPW landfill fees. Mr. Anderson?
I don't know why that's on again, but we've already gone through that and you already voted to put that on, on the out-to-public notice, so. What?
This is what it is.
Oh, this is the public notice. Sorry. It's Monday, it is Monday, yes. Okay, so, as, as I explained, I guess a couple of months ago, about a month ago, May in May, I'm looking to increase certain, certain costs in the landfill to basically cover the town's costs so it's not coming out of our budget. It's actually just covering the cost so it's not costing the town any additional funds. So, the proposed changes, as I talked about it, I'll go through them again. So, changes, I'm looking to charge a $12 fee for white goods for CFC removal. So, that would be for any de-humidifier or any refrigerator, stoves, things that doesn't have, don't have CFCs, they'll come in for nothing. They're free, free, we accept them for free. Right now, I'm looking for, for pickup trucks, less than one ton. We're, we're looking to charge a $10 fee for that only because we're getting a lot of, we're getting a lot of leaf and yard waste and we have to basically grind it up every year. So, the $10 fee will actually cut, based on the number of trucks and a review of our slips, will actually help pay for the cost of the grinder. So, that's what the $10 fee on, and that's really for pickup trucks. So, residents who bring in bags, we're not going to charge for, for a resident who brings in a few bags. It's the pickup trucks we're going to, we're trying to charge fees for. If it's a big pickup truck where it looks like it, not that we're accepting commercial waste, but if it looks like it's a landscaper or something, to try and deter that, we're charging $25 a, a pickup truck for anything with a one, someone who comes in with a pickup truck, one ton or more, that's got a full load. Sofers, chairs, disposal, right now, we're charging $15 per unit. Our average price to get rid of that right now at ABC disposal is $16 per unit. So, I'm looking to try and put that up to at least $20 again because we're taking in a lot of, a lot more furniture now than I've ever, thought we'd ever take in. Clean mattresses, we'll still take for nothing, but mattresses that are not clean, not recyclable, we're looking at same thing 20 because right now it's costing us, it's costing us greater than $16 a unit when you look at, at the cost. That same mattress compared to a sofa chair costs us that, over $16 right now per unit when we're sending it over to ABC disposal. Tires, pay-as-you-throw bags. The other big thing I'm looking to do is we have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people that use the transfer station that right now, or the drop-off area, that do not bring this, do not use pay-as-you-throw bags. So, we discussed it with the landfill subcommittee. We're looking to charge $5 now for people who don't use the pay-as-you-throw bags. The pay-as-you-throw bags, there is no cost. So, instead of charging them $2 a bag, which we're doing, what they're putting their waste in the big black bags, the bags that are larger than 30 gallons, we'll now charge $5 per bag, no matter what size, just to say people put it in the pay-as-you-throw bags and there's no issue. Clean wood, we're still going to charge $5 for a 35-gallon barrel. However, I do want to start charging $25, we're going to actually reduce the rate. It went from 50 down to 25 for clean wood. So, that'll be for a level four-by-eight pickup truck. That was at, that's, that's right now at 50, we're going to reduce that to 25. But we're going to start charging a new fee for CND adulterated wood, wood that has pressure treated, wood that, that we can no longer accept at the landfill. So, we have to take that, load it into a roll-off and bring that to ABC disposal. So, we're going to charge $60 a truckload for people, for, for anyone that brings. So we're gonna charge $60 a truckload for people, for, for anyone that brings in CND or adulterated wood, $5 for a 35-gallon barrel. So the bigger, that's one of the bigger changes as well. Because again, that comes in, we can't put it in our landfill, we have to truck it out. So those are my proposed changes for the landfill fees.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, maybe this is just me and my old age, but I could've sworn that we said at the landfill subcommittee it was $5 for the one ton or under on the yard waste. I might, again, I might be incorrect.
I don't think so. No, it was the, the $5 was, I had originally proposed $3 a bag for the, for the waste, but you, that was the $5, we put it up to $5.
And then the only other question I had was on the $5 non-pay-as-you-throw-bag trash.
Yep.
Could we, 'cause it specifically states, you know, the black contractor bags are much larger. Could we make that for black contractor bags, or like your standard, whatever it is, like 45, 50-gallon trash barrel? Because that's essentially two of the larger pay-as-you-throw bags. I just think we should make that a little bit more, we clean it up a little bit more, so, you know.
Okay.
Just my suggestion.
That's fine. I mean, again, I'm only trying to charge the money, so when it now comes in, we're gonna take that money and actually put it in the, in the trust fund-
Exactly.
-so that it goes to the closure rather than, than to the general fund.
Yeah, and I think, 'cause originally you had, it was either, you know, $3 or $4 for essentially what would be two-
Right.
... large pay-as-you-throw bags, and I said make it $5, make somebody pay an extra buck to bring it down there, so.
That's correct.
Incentivize them to use the program.
Right, correct.
Madam President? I have a question for Bill.
Mr. LeBeau?
Bill? Yes? Can't we give the residents a free barrel or two a week of just yard waste? Do we have to charge them for everything?
No, if they bring them, if they bring it in in the brown bags, like I said, if they bring, residents come in with brown bags, we're not gonna charge them for it. It's, it's the pickup trucks that are coming in fully loaded to the brim every week, multiple times.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that the residents should be able to use the dump as long as it's open for their yard waste without a fee. You know, I mean-
Again, the intent of the fee, I'm not trying to, trying to, the town's not making any money, we're just trying to cover our costs to grind it up. I mean, we just spent, the town just spent $15,000 to grind up pretty much the leaf and yard waste that was sitting up in that huge pileup there. I didn't have that budgeted, and I had to find money in my budget to cover that. So I'm trying to get the cost so I could put in as, to cover those costs, so I mean, it's either-
Two 55-gallon drums a week per homeowner.
If that's what you'd like, I'd-
I would like to see it, so they could at least, people, they're not gonna go there all day, clean once in the spring, once in the fall, couple of free trips won't kill us.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of Councilor LeBeau? How do you think they're gonna keep track of who's brought their two free bins a week?
I think most of the people in town are honest, fair people, they're just gonna go in and, you know, just a regular Joe like me, gonna go up there twice a week, I mean, twice a month. Maybe, you know, it's, if I rake my yard and throw the leaves away, I mean, we don't have to charge everybody for everything all the time, it's only a couple of bucks.
But let me ask a question. If you're bringing it in a brown bag and it's free, that's not-
You gotta buy a brown bag now. Not free anymore.
It's 50 cents.
Ah, whatever.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just worried that if you're, that, well, most of the people are honest, that if it turns into, I just don't know how they would possibly know who came twice a week with their free barrels this week versus who came next week, and I, you know, would not, I mean, we know we have an issue with some of the, you know, landscapers who are bringing large, I mean, I, I just, to me, it, a brown bag is not that much of an expense to be able to dump your yard waste for free.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the landscapers, they should pay. They're making money cleaning their yard, I'm just worried about the little homeowner guys, that's all.
And again, we're not trying to target the homeowner. We're not gonna be charging someone who comes in with two barrels and dumps it. I'm charging, I'm talking about the people that make, not the, not the one trip a week, but they're making like three trips on a Saturday, the four trips on a Saturday, or they're in next, the following week on four trips on a Saturday. It's like, okay, how much yard waste do people have in their yards? I, I don't know, but if they bring in two bags a week or a Saturday, okay. If they bring in two barrels, that's fine. We're gonna, I should say the tenant knows, who's, he can easily tell you when it comes in, who's abusing the system and who's not. It's just right now, there's no way for me to, to, to charge it. So now we end up in a big pile of yard waste, and it's costing the town $15,000 to, again, I'm just trying to make sure I have the money to grind it up, so we can stay in our permit with DEM and, and get things done.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Just have one item to add, as Mr. Anderson could probably attest to. I'm a big fan of the landfill. And the guys that work down there, I think they know everybody that goes in there on a regular basis. And if you stop down there and hang out for an hour or so, they'll point them out for you. So that, I think those are the ones he's trying to target.
Any other comments from the council? I'd like to open it up to the public. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Could there be like once a month possi-
Please-
Oh, Cameron Ramsey, 11 What's Up Avenue. Possibility, maybe once a month, people can drop off a truckload. I'm one of those guys that does drop off a truckload. It's just I don't put big vines in a bag if I'm going to the dump anyway. I'm not a contractor at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Anyone else from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? I'd like to close the public hearing on this item for the proposed DPW landfill fees. So are there any changes? In order to make it clear, for Mr. Anderson, we need to modify the fee schedule? Based on your comments.
Yes, Madam, I, I like what Bill did. I think it's something we should support. I think he's doing a good job.
Madam President? Ms. Ryan?
I agree. I think it's simple. I think it's, it's, I think it's simple. It's like, get, actually, those bags can be 40 cents or 50 cents a, a bag. I would make a proposal to accept it as it is.
Do I have a second?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I just wanna make sure that in that, the $5 non-pay-as-you-throw trash bag item is clarified, as we discussed prior to the public comments.
Could you just repeat what that was you wanted to do, John? It's on, under the $5?
Yeah, $5 is non-pay-as-you-throw trash bag. So that would be for eight, I guess your standard, Bill, what size are those barrels? Your standard, like, you pick up at a Home Depot?
30 gallon?
It could be a 30 gallon, it could be a 64 gallon, it could be, um-
If I got, if I had a Home Depot or Humphreys and I go get a-
And you buy a smaller barrel, you're probably looking at 35 to 40. The bigger barrel, that, that, like the recycle barrel that we all passed out-
Not 96.
Not the big one, no, no, no. But the ones we sold, like 500, 600 of them?
Yeah.
Those were 64 gallon.
All right, so we do up to 64 gallon or a big contractor bag, $5? I think that's what the size of the contractor bags are, right?
Yeah, I mean, a 64-gallon bin would, would hold like two of the, would hold two black bags, so I'm just-
Well, whatever, the ones I have in my house. I mean, you don't know what I have in my house, but-
Typical contractor, yeah, but a typical client.
What, like 50, like 45, 50 gallons, is that like a barrel size?
That's probably fine.
Okay.
Well, shouldn't it just be any size larger than the $2 pay-as-you-throw bag?
34 gallon?
$30?
Big contractor bag.
Yeah.
How many, how many gallons are in the big pay-as-you-throw?
I should've flipped it over and looked at it.
The largest pay-as-you-throw bag is 30 gallons. The smaller ones are 15 gallon. So I would say, so again, and it's a dollar for the 15-gallon size, it's $2 for the, for the 30-gallon size, so if we set anything larger than 30 gallon, it'd be $5.
So it should just be a 68, 60-gallon barrel, basically. Like you pay a dollar more for driving up to landfill, rather than two, two bags.
I'd still like to see a free one.
This is, this is trash, though. Yeah, not the, not the yard waste.
So how are we gonna amend this motion?
So how, how would you amend this item, Mr. Edwards?
Contractor bag, like the big black contractor bag, whatever that wording he uses there is, and, or a, you know, standard, the 60-gallon household trash barrel. All I know is that mine fits two of the large red town trash bags. So it's a dollar more if you do it that way, rather than buy the bags from the program. Incentivize people to buy the bags.
So why don't we just say greater than 30-gallon trash bag?
Okay, we could do that. I'm just worried, because if you can, if it's, if all of a sudden somebody has like a 96-gallon roll-off barrel that they're gonna roll up there with, and they fill that up, now they're abusing the system, now they, they're-
Yeah, but then you're counting on the DPW guys at the landfill to figure out how many gallons are in a barrel.
To make it easy, I mean, if they, again, I prefer if everyone just use the, you know, the bags. If they use the bags, you bring it up, you dump for free, there's no charge. But if they don't, anything that's not a 30-gallon purple, magenta bag, or whatever color, it's a purple, ginger, is just $5. So if you come up with another bag that's a white bag or a black bag, and it's not a pay-as-you-throw bag, you're paying $5 to dispose of it, that'll stop, that'll make people buy the bags, and now I'm paying $2 instead of $5.
There you go.
Madam President? I'd like to change, add a freebie for the guys that can't afford to walk there just for yard waste.
So for the, let's just clarify this for the $5 non-pay-as-you-throw bag trash, it would be $5 for anything larger than a 30-gallon trash bag, as per bag. So do we accept that amendment?
Is that even really an amendment?
No, there was a motion.
No, no, no. We have a motion on the table, so it would have to be amendment to the motion.
May I say one more thing?
The amendment that John suggested.
Right, amendment to John.
Yes.
If you specify, if someone comes in with less than a 30-gallon bag, is it, what's the price? That's not a pay-as-you-throw bag. That's, my, my intent is it, if you, if you bring it in and pay-as-you-throw, you don't pay anything. If you don't bring it in as pay-as-you-throw, we're gonna charge you $5 a bag, no matter if it's 40, 60, whatever size bag it is, we're gonna charge you $5 a bag.
Madam President?
I think that's the simplest, cleanest way to do it, and then-
Then there's no questioning and there's-
Then the DP, then the, the staff there isn't looking at what size bag you have and trying to decide if you would like-
It's just $5.
It's just, if you use a pay-as-you-throw bag, it's free. If you don't, then there's a fee. It just seems nice and clean and simple and not too complicated.
Mr. McReevee?
May I suggest that all you really need to do is strike out what's in the parentheses?
Yep.
So just for clarification, this would be $5.
If you want to dispose of it, yes.
That's what I would do. So you'll pay for the guy who brings in two, three bags, you'll pay.
Okay, now, Mr. LeBeau?
I would like to add a line for homeowners to have 50 gallons of yard waste, leaves, twigs, for free.
Again, it's how to determine 50 gallons. So if, the, the way this is written, it says $0 for leaf and yard waste in a residential vehicle. If they can fit it in a residential vehicle, then it's no charge. If they come in a pickup truck, it's less than a ton, then it's $10. If they come in a one-ton or more pickup, it's $25.
I quit, you win. Charge them.
It, it, again, they have to-
What I'm saying, some, some people might have a pickup truck, and they put two barrels in with yard waste, and they go to the dump. They're gonna pay $25 for a pickup truck load? It's only two barrels? That's, that's what I think Mr. LeBeau's getting at.
So if the same pickup truck came to the-
So if the pickup truck comes in with two bags or three bags, okay, my guys are not gonna charge that, that person for that, for that, that stuff. Again, it's, it's when you're putting, filling the whole pickup truck, that's what we're targeting with that, not, not the bags or not a, if someone comes in with a barrel of, of leaf and yard waste, we're not gonna charge them for a barrel of leaf and yard waste. A resident comes in, right.
So it's the original motion?
I think we're good.
It's simple. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the proposed changes for the DPW and landfill fees as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Six, four, one opposed. Mr. LeBeau. One C, proposed recreation and beach fees. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I think it's supposed to be Carlos.
I know. Carlos?
I just wanna know where Carlos is.
We could end up in trouble, you know, we could end up in trouble for that.
Oh, yeah, that's auto, autocorrect.
That's a typo.
Yeah, I was voicing that email.
Okay, so the proposal for beach fees is no change to the Fogland fees, and Grinnell's fees would be $10 per day?
For cars, not Carlos.
Cars. If he's in a car, it's $10. If it's, it's 25 for campers and $5 per day for motorcycles.
Right. So what we, what we, the only change is really for, for cars. Because I believe last year we had, we had it at $5. So we, we went and changed the cars to 10, kept motorhomes, campers, whatever you wanna call them, the same, and we kept motorcycles the same at 5.
John, I, last year, I thought Grinnell's was $5 for cars weekdays and $10 for cars on weekends last year.
I, I think you may be right. I think you may be right. But we went with, with the $10 every day. Because when we, when we tried to raise the fees on Grinnell's back a, a couple of years ago, the, the amount of revenue that came in plummeted. That, you know, we raised it to $5, and it does make a big difference.
And the Grinnell's fees, is that for non-resident?
That's non-residents only. Residents would get in free, as they usually do, for now.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Thank you. I just, I was kinda hoping we were gonna see your annual sticker come through, that you had mentioned the last meeting. Next meeting, or next year?
Yeah, I thi, I, I thought maybe we should get the beach done and, and then then take a look at both beaches together, possibly.
I look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's coming eventually. I know we don't like fees, but the way the budgets have been going, we're gonna, it's gonna migrate to a fee-based amenities in this town.
I'd personally like to see it go up even more, but from the damage that's being done at the beaches, especially Fogland and Grinnell's. I think we're spending a lot of money on having DPW workers go down there in the morning, spending two hours picking up trash and cleaning up the beach. And that's taking away from the time they should be spending on the streets and doing other things. And I just think that we should, you know, think about going up a little more than $10.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Hilton?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I, I agree with Joe, and just to clarify, Tiverton residents don't pay any fees at any of the beaches. Grinnell's, going forward however, is slightly different in that when we accepted the $400,000 in grant money from the DEM and the council approved this, we had to agree that whatever we charged Tiverton residents, we would charge other Rhode Island residents, which means that if Tiverton residents don't have to pay to go to Grinnell's, other Rhode Island residents, Rhode Island, do not have to pay to go to Grinnell's. And no one thought that was going to be a huge burden, because frankly, we're kind of far away, and we didn't really think lots of folks from Little Compton would be coming up to go to Grinnell's, and people from the other side of the bay, probably not. But we do have the latitude at Grinnell's and at Fogland to charge out-of-state residents whatever we want. And, you know, if you've been down to the beach, the parking lot is, is basically completed, the beach portion of the beach is pretty much completed, and, you know, if you see the plan- And, you know, if you see the plan for the renovations, while Grinnell's may be small, you know, at the end of the day, when this is done, it's really going to be a very lovely place. And it will have the nicest restroom facilities of any of the beaches that we have, and it will have a beautiful shade cell structure. You know, Grinnell's traditionally has attracted a great many out-of-state residents, in part because it's close, but as much as anything, because of all of the beaches that you can go to if you don't live in Tiverton, but you live in the adjacent area. It's the least expensive one. There, it, it's, it's the cheapest beach around. So it attracts a lot of people for whom going to the least expensive beach is, you know, a big part of their decision-making process. And sometimes those folks are not entirely respectful of visiting our beach. So I would really like to see us go with Grinnell's to the same pricing that we have, at least for this year, for Fogland, if in fact we can open it, which we're hoping we will, which is to charge ten dollars on weekdays and fifteen on weekends, as we do at Fogland. And, you know, I understand what John is saying about, you know, the fees will, will, will lose some revenue, because there will be people who will choose not to pay that, because as I said, they're choosing Grinnell's because it's the least expensive. I'm not entirely convinced that everything in, every service that we provide for residents has to break even or make profit. I think there are some things that are just nice to have, because they're nice for the community to have. One of the things that came out of the charrettes and the various meetings around Grinnell's beach is that a lot of Tivertonians said, "We'd like our beach back." You know, "We wanna go there, and we wanna feel comfortable, and we wanna be surrounded by other people who are respectful of the beach, and respectful of the fact that we have this little gem." And, you know, we don't mind raising the rates if it discourages disrespectful people from coming. And I don't mean to imply that everybody from out-of-state is disrespectful, it's not. But it doesn't take but a few really bad apples to ruin it for everybody. So, you know, given the amount of money, I mean, this is a half-a-million-dollar renovation that's going on at that property, and given what it's gonna be like when it's all done, you know, I'm okay with raising the rates, and if we lose a little bit of revenue, you know, that's okay. But if we have a beautiful place for our citizens to go and enjoy, and it, it means that it's better taken care of, it's okay with me.
Any other questions from the council?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Just out of curiosity, when we looked at the beach fees, did we look at neighboring community beach fees and compare them? And the only reason I ask is because I...
I typically compare it to, you know, I, I try to think logically and say, if, am I gonna drive down from the north and stop at Grinnell's Beach for fifteen dollars? Or am I gonna proceed down to the South Shore to an oceanfront beach for twelve? So...
Yeah, but South Shore is twenty on the weekends.
It's up to twenty? Okay.
Yeah, South Shore is...
I buy an annual pass, so...
Yeah, but South Shore is, South Shore is twenty dollars.
Four hundred and seventy-five.
South Shore is twenty on the weekends, and fifteen on the weekday.
Okay, I think last year it was twelve and fifteen, so they must've went up.
It is. I mean, we did look at, when we were doing the Grinnell's beach work, and there is no question that Grinnell's Beach is, I mean, not only is it the least expensive beach in the East Bay, it's less expensive than any of the Massachusetts beaches either. It's less expensive than Horse Neck or any of the other...
I don't know if it's less than Horse Neck.
Yes.
What's the non-resident for Horse Neck now? I think I used to pay eight bucks.
With these proposed, with these proposed fees during the week, it's gonna be more expensive than going down to either Easton's or Gooseberry in Newport. I've got, I got the fee rate right in front of me, so...
Ten dollars a day to go to Easton Beach?
Just keep in mind, we don't, we don't currently have enough employees to open that beach every day during the week.
We know that, but...
Yeah. And, and, and by next summer, I think we'll be looking at both beaches and proposing some new ideas as far as overall fees. But if I could just address the, I think you're alluding to the trash situation?
Well, not just the, I mean, it's more than, the trash is one of the things, but there's a whole lot of problems other than beyond the trash that are happening down there right now. And, you know, and, and again, because it's technically not open, but people are finding places to park, I mean, it's, it's really very depressing, and I'm sure Bill can tell you that, you know, all the work is going on down there, and the first thing that you have to do before the DPW goes to work is clean up the mess that got made the day before.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, you know, ten thousand dollars worth of new sand that people just feel free to move where they want. People are moving the jetty rocks to use, I mean, these big boulders. You can ask Bill, they're moving them to anchor their blankets down. I mean, I mean, and it will be better when it's open in their supervision, but, you know, given that, that we're putting a half-a-million dollars into that beach, I don't have any problem with raising the, the out-of-state rates at that beach to be at least commensurate with Fogland, and, you know, when it's done, I think it's gonna be really, you know, pretty nice.
Yeah. And I would, I would, you know, at least ask you to consider, you know, keeping people off that beach after dark. I think the town ordinance is already written as the beach is closed at, at dusk. And unfortunately, if it's, if people are gonna abuse it, I know historically fishermen have been allowed to go down there and fish off the rocks, or off, off the end of the abutment, current bridge abutment. But if, if it's gonna be abused, then maybe it's time to...
I think we're getting on track.
Pull that privilege back.
We're, we're focusing on fees. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on recreation and beach fees?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I absolutely agree with the council here, Ms. Hilton just said.
Could you state your name?
My name is Joe Cleary, I live at forty-seven Red Tail Trail in Tiverton, Rhode Island here.
Thank you.
I was down at that beach a couple of, maybe a month ago, and there was like a seventy-thirty split. Most of the residents were from Massachusetts down there. I saw the, the beach being destroyed up where the fishermen are. There was a woman from Tiverton there fishing. I interceded because she had to throw a fishing pole on the ground. She couldn't get near the rocks, they wouldn't let her near it, there were so many people from out-of-state over there. That charge should absolutely be done. That beach is for the Rhode Island people, and if they come over here, I'm glad to have them come here. But that should be an increase of fifteen dollars to anybody that's out-of-state.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Last call, any other comments from the public? Now closing the hearing, public hearing on the proposed recreation and beach fees. After this wonderful discussion, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Madam President, I...
Ms. Hilton?
I make a motion that for at least the remainder of this year, that we set the beach fees for both Fogland and Grinnell's at ten dollars on weekdays and fifteen dollars on weekends for non-Tiverton residents, with the reminder that for the purposes of admission to Grinnell's, we have to remember anyone with a Rhode Island plate is a Rhode Island resident and falls in the same category as a Tiverton resident. I'll second that.
Is that just for the cars? And what about the, oh, sorry, you're right. That covers the campers, as well as motorcycles and Carlos, Carlos?
Madam President?
Instead?
Just a quick clarification. Rhode Island residents who are not Tiverton residents will still have to pay at Fogland, correct?
Correct.
Under this, okay.
So a motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to one. Mr. LeBeau opposed. Town Council's sitting as Board of Licensing, C1, Thaddeus McCauskey, four-eight-eight Neck Road, approval for outdoor special event and entertainment license for a wedding Saturday, September ninth, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, as well as one A, public hearing for the approval of sound variance. Is Ms. McCauskey here? Come on up.
Hi. If you could tell us a little bit about this event?
Oh, sure. It's Saturday, oh, I'm sorry. Saturday afternoon on September ninth. Our oldest son, excuse me, and his fiancee who live in New York are coming up, and they wanna get married in the backyard. Mostly family. It's about eighty-five guests in total, including the family. We'll have music from roughly six o'clock to ten o'clock, and by eleven o'clock, everyone will be leaving. And we have, there shouldn't be many cars. We're arranging for transportation from Providence for all the guests to Tiverton, and then sending them back in the transportation.
Okay, so you say the entertainment would be from six o'clock to ten?
That's correct.
Any questions from the council? Since this is a public hearing on the sound variance, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the sound variance in the public? Anyone wishing to speak? Last call, anyone who wishes to speak on this sound variance? I close the public hearing on the sound variance portion of this request. Do I have a motion?
Madam President? I'll defer to Council Hilton.
Ms. Hilton?
Madam President, I make a motion that we grant Thaddeus McCauskey, forty-eight Neck Road, approval for an outdoor special event entertainment license for September ninth, twenty-seventeen, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? unanimous?
Thank you very much.
One more?
Yeah, yeah.
Do I have a motion for the sound variance?
You did this one, you might as well keep it going.
Madam President, I make a motion that we grant approval for a sound variance to Thaddeus McCauskey, forty-eight Neck Road, on Saturday, September ninth, from 5:00 to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Just one question on, Mr. McCauskey mentioned that it was from six to ten for the sound variance. Will you have the band set up at five?
I apologize, I don't have all the detail. The band will probably set up about five. Dinner will be served six, six-thirty, the band will start playing then light music, and then probably, you know, the dancing music, that part, from eight o'clock to ten o'clock.
It says seven to ten.
From five to eleven.
But it, on the sound variance, it says a band will perform from seven to ten.
I would just do the five to ten.
Five to ten, then they can make sure their instruments are...
For the tuning.
And that still gives you eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock.
Yeah, they're done, they're done by ten, absolutely, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion for a sound variance from five to ten PM. Motion's been made, was it seconded?
Yes, I can do it.
Thank you. Our motions are made and seconded, all those in favor? unanimous?
Okay, thank you now.
Very good, good luck. C2, Jane Biddo, Evelyn's Drive-In, request approval of sound variance extension of rain dates for Singing Out Against Hunger fundraiser for a third rain date of seven-twenty-eight, with other rain dates to include seven-twenty-nine, seven-thirty, eight-thirteen, and nine-ten.
Madam President, she's called and asked to withdraw that, please.
To withdraw it?
It's fine, she's...
Very good. C2 has been withdrawn by the applicant. Non-advertised licenses, subject to meeting all legal requirements. C3, George Vakis, Famous Pizza of Tiverton LLC, four-three-three Main Road, request approval of vitrin license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. Vakis here? Very good. Hi. So this is, basically, you're purchasing Famous Pizza, and...
I'm Daphne Vakis, this is my husband, George Vakis, and we're in the process of purchasing an existing pizza place, Tiverton House of Pizza.
And same menu, same operation, no change?
Yes. Continue for now, and we'll see what the future holds.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Just one comment. Should've brought some samples.
Next time.
I have just one question, and I think Madam Clerk knows. I, I do believe that the OWTS conformance certificate you have, and it's consistent with the proposed drawn layout here, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vitrin license for George Vakis, Famous Pizza of Tiverton LLC, four-thirty-three Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? unanimous? Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
C4, Manufactured Home, Elderly Community License Renewal, Countryview Estates, continued from the April twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen meeting. We have the Planning Board Recommendation and Survey Plan.
Good evening. I represent Countryview, Ray Holland, and I represent Countryview. The planning boards informed me that they, we filed all the plans with them, we've got our approvals. They've sent that on to the Building Inspector's Office. I went there this morning to see if he had gotten a letter to you. He's on vacation, so he won't be back for a week. So we're waiting, he's supposed to, one of the ordinance, if there are any violations that are coming from his office on the zoning of the issue, he's supposed to notify you. Jody said there are none, but she hasn't got him to sign a letter, because he's not here. I would ask the council, if possible, if they could renew the license, contingent on getting that approval from, from Mr. Hall, in that, as of this morning at eleven, there's nothing, there's never been any zoning violations, and there've been any corrective acts, and having to take it from the zoning point of view.
We do have the information from the Planning Board that says it's complete, and recommend approval of the license. Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion? Oh, no, this is, no public hearing on this.
There are some people that have been coming into my office that did want to speak to the council on this.
Okay. If there's people wishing to speak, please come over here.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board here. My name is Joe Cleary, I'm the president of the association at Countryview Estates. I'm here to ask for help, first of all. We're an over-five-fifty-five community, and most residents there are in their late sixties, early seventies, up to the eighties and nineties. It's a fragile community, the elderly, and we have a list of concerns. Constant water problems on the property. We've complained to Twin River, I'm sorry, we've complained to Countryview Estates. My property, forty-seven Red Tail Trail, I went in March of this year. I received, I got a letter from the town stating that the water problems had to be repaired on my property. As of today, after the engineer went out, they decided they were gonna repair the property, nothing has been done. We have a gentleman by the name of Mr. Morse, forty-seven, I'm sorry, forty-four Red Tail Trail. In our release, it says they must supply the annual report. He's been denied this request, and the manager stated to him, if he kept complaining about it, he'd be hearing the wrath of hometown America's attorneys. The swimming pool, the swimming pool area, it's loaded with mold on the walls. It's been asked to be cleaned, hasn't been touched, hasn't been repaired. Forty-nine, Blackbird Court, rat infestation all over the place. People have been notified... People have been notified. Twenty-nine page written to the governor. Been waiting to get information back from the governor's office, find out what's going to be done, because nothing could seem to get done through our Countryview Estates. Twenty-one Locke Lane, standing water issues. Eight Bluebird, standing water issues. One fifteen Park Lane, no rear stairs. They've been complaining since 2005. Letters were sent. They said they were going to repair, put the stairs in since 2005. They're saying they're not taking responsibility. This is an elderly person that can't afford to put the stairs in. It was their commit to put the stairs in, they should be put in. I have pictures here of the standing water, knee-high up to the sheds here. Pictures have been sent to Hometown America, they've been notified, no action. They say there's no, they have no responsibility for that commentary. State law says it can be no standing water. They sent a letter to the resident state, and they get, water can stay for 48 hours, and it can stay wet after defeat after that. There's nothing in the state laws that says that. DBR has been notified, we're having DBR come in, look at, review some of this. The 10% open spaceland, there is no open space. The bike paths originally placed in there, there was no bike paths. The gazebo areas that were supposed to be putting there, there were no gazebo areas for these people. These are all guarantees to these people when they bought these homes since 2001. Streetlights. Thirty agreement, lease agreement, we cannot touch the streetlights. The streetlights are connected to our homes. We pay electricity to illuminate the roads at a roughly cost of $200 a year. That shouldn't be on us for illuminating the road, that belongs to Countryview Estates, and we want to be reimbursed for it. Forty-three Red Tail Trail. Driveways are all broken, they were never put in properly. The original owner did replace the driveways. Hometown America is saying the driveways belong to us. We own nothing but the home. We own 11 feet out to cut the lawns, the driveways, the walkways are in the lease. It's their responsibility to fix and repair these driveways. It's an ongoing, continuous violation of these people's homes. We cannot get Hometown America to even talk to us. They have a manager down there, and they're not denying the manager, any due respect, but everything says it's either not in the budget, or it's not their responsibility. And it is their responsibility, it's in the lease. We're asking for help, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like these allegations to be looked into.
The only thing I can say from my point of view is, first of all, I think this is not the proper forum, because what was before you was the license and not, let's say, some complaints of the people involved. I don't know of any of these. I haven't been informed of these. This is the first time I've heard of any of this, and I don't think they go to the essence of a license.
So, Madam President, there is a town code ordinance on mobile home parks, Section 46, the town code. Some of the complaints may, that were mentioned, may go to that. Some probably would be more civil in nature as being part of a lease. I think the appropriate course of action to do would be to grant pursuant to all legal requirements, which would include that Title 46. And then when Neil looks at the zoning issues later on, he can also do an inspection to see if Section 46 is complied with. If there's anything that needs to be brought up to town ordinance, it can be done at that time, and it would be a condition of the license and meeting legal requirements.
Madam President, could I ask the attorney a question?
Yes, proceed.
I was speaking with, I got a phone call from Tim Llewellyn. He is a...
Vice President.
Vice President over at that home over there. He was looking to do some work on the ordinance. Could you give me that ordinance number, so I could, exactly how he would find it, so he can get some of this stuff squared away?
Sure. It's Chapter 46, Article 2.
Oh, 46. Two, yep.
Mobile Home Parks, and it's Section 46 dash 26.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Sorry.
Mobile Home Parks, Section... Section 46.
Twenty-six, but that's the definitions. That's the first section, and it goes through to 46 dash 38.
And that will give him the basic ordinance that says...
Yeah, and there's actually another section of the zoning code, Chapter 46 of the zoning code. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the same thing. Article 4, Section 60, Article 4, Section 16.
And that's under the zoning code?
Yes.
Thank you.
You said Article 4, Section 60 or 16?
16.
16.
Peter, may I ask a question?
Madam Secretary, I'd like to add one more thing. I mean, Madam President. According to the Federation of Mobile Homes of Rhode Island, we have an article just come out, we get a minimum of a 3% increase a year on our rents on those, they go up to a maximum of 8%. They're getting a 60% return on these properties. They're cutting back on the maintenance and all the, and all the other work that and repairs that need to be done in there, that's covered under their clause, and they're just not doing the work. And when the people do go in and complain, they're being legitimately threatened to tell them that they're going to, you know, they'll have to deal with the wrath of an attorney. You're talking to the most fragile community we have, the elderly here, and they're being taken advantage of.
Thank you. Ms. Hilton?
What is the current status of their license right now? I mean, the renewal that we have in front of us, which is signed September 13, 2016, says renewed for 90 days. So what is the status of this license right now?
So essentially, there were some issues with the lot lines, and the residences were placed over the lot lines that were, that were depicted on the recorded plan. So they had to go to the planning board for that, which is why they only had the 90-day extension. So now that that's been resolved, they're here for a grant of a full license.
And so what happens, what would happen if we didn't renew this license tonight, subject to meeting all legal requirements, but instead waited for a report or possible inspection from Neil?
If you wanted to bring it back up for an inspection, inspection for Neil, I'd say the appropriate mechanism would be to grant it on a temporary basis like it previously was granted, because if you don't renew it, then you're stuck in the position of, what do you do with an unlicensed mobile home park, which could cause further problems for the residents possibly? So if you wanted to have that in front of you before you made the decision on the full license, you could do a, another temporary...
Madam Chairman, if I could, some of the things, the questions you just posed, they're very civil in nature. I can deny a lot of them, as Mr. Cleary said.
I realize that, I realize acknowledging that some of the issues that Mr. Cleary raised are outside of the scope of the town council, but there are certainly issues that he did raise in there that are within our zoning code and are within our ordinances. So while we can't address all of them, we certainly could have answers for some of them.
I understand that. I just wanted to make that clear. If, assume for the sake of discussion, some of the things Mr. Cleary said are correct and not within the scope of the council here, those are the kinds of things that would be in the courthouse for two years. So to hold back a license and have these people...
No, we're, we're only discussing things that would be in the purview of the council under our, under Tiverton's Code of Ordinances.
Well, I think that's what I mentioned, is that, that I, I don't have a problem if we're waiting for Mr., for Neil Hall to get back and say, yes, there is a problem or there isn't, and he can investigate. I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but he's not here, and again, as of today at 11:30, there were no violations on notice at the town hall, at the building inspectors, and I think Nancy can attest that there has been Mr. Cleary and others complaining, complaining, complaining about many things that have nothing to do with the council, and he has not seen fit to say, that's in violation. We have no violations to the mess of my knowledge, and I've only represented them for a year. There aren't any violations, and there haven't been. We brought this, this issue to the planning board's attention because we found out, this wasn't something where we were violated by the town. What happened was doing some work there, in essence, the homes go, let's say, north to south. Somebody liked the view better going east to west. They went east to west, and they went over a lot line. So it knocked everybody out of line. When we had the engineers going there to do some work, they said, oh, wait a minute, here's the problem. We came to the planning board and said, we've got to fix this because, and that's what brought this all about. It wasn't because the town came after us and cited us.
I, I understand that, but thank you for the clarification, Peter.
Nancy just reminded me that, I believe it comes up again in November, so even if you were to decide to grant the license, you'd still have a period where you could see if there are issues and then come back in November. So you could either grant a shorter, shorter license, or if you were to grant it, it would only be on November anyway.
Excuse me, one other thing. If you read the ordinance, I think there's, I'm not sure if there's a mistake. It says April 30th is the licenses go. This license does not go like liquor licenses and whatever, whatever other licenses there are. I think that the licenses, according to the ordinance, should be renewed as of April 30th, so the timeframe just isn't right if I read it correctly.
I think it expires on, on June 30th.
June 30th, right.
So today is July.
To add to this, first of all, Hometown America knew this situation existed because what happened is, I, when I first came to my property, I was here for five months complaining about two to three or four inches of water on my property. I had to, I was, went to the manager, I wrote letters to him, I have them in writing. This is the imminent complaints that I have from the people in Countryview, okay? It's not like there's just a few complaints here, okay? The problem was, they told me to do what I had to do when I had the water situation. I went, I did something about the water situation. I went to the building inspector, he sent me to the town engineer. The town engineer come out, looked at the property, deemed it as being wet. Once I had that letter in my hand, I notified Home, Country, Countryview Estates that this property needed to be fixed. That was Friday night. Monday morning, at 8:30 in the morning, the police department is at my door. I got a complaint from the police department, the manager says now she was threatened by me, okay, under retaliation retribution law. I showed them, this is a government agent's letter, you cannot violate me for anything. I says, this letter was given to Hometown America on Friday. I find it ironic, you're here to hear 8:30 Monday morning. I never saw the woman before, okay? Furthermore, after the police and I discussed the situation, it was resolved very amply without me having any kind of restraining order. It went on further from that. I became president of the association over there, went to a meeting, had a meeting with my board. The manager showed up, but her husband threatened me. I went back to the police department. The police department went over and spoke to the manager's, then they spoke to the manager's husband. After speaking to the manager's husband, he gave the officer a hard time, and he was told to either back off the female officer, okay? This is the kind of threats and intimidation they're trying to use on people down there, because this is why the people are afraid to go forward. It's not going to be accepted down there anymore. The people are going to stand up, we want, we're not asking for anything other than what's due us. We're, we're abiding by our leases, we expect them to buy the, buy, buy this. Here's a perfect example house from 2005, been waiting for a set of stairs. Elderly woman can't go out the back. They were promising, and it's in the letter, it's in writing, okay? This is ongoing, but I don't know how this is down here, but they, there are problems up there, and they need to be rectified.
So I believe the recommendation is to, from council, is to renew the license subject to meeting all legal requirements, including an inspection from the building official.
I can leave you a list of charges if you'd like. I've had a copy, don't see nobody's looking at.
Madam Chairman, if there's a zoning issue that he's complaining about, the trouble is he tells half the truth. We called the police because he intimidated the manager, and he was told to back off. He's a retired policeman from another community in Massachusetts and went around threatening, according to them, and he was told to back off, he would be in trouble. This isn't the proper forum for that. If he has a zoning issue, then he belongs down the hall. That's what Neil Hall is for. He makes those decisions.
Neil Hall is both building official as well as zoning.
Yeah, exactly. We have no problem with that. If there's an issue, let him go there.
And certainly, we, it's within our purview to renew the license, subject to putting conditions on that license. That's well within our purview to do that.
I understand that, but, but not, not to belong in the district court or the superior court. That's what he's using this forum for.
Madam President.
Mr. Cleary.
Could we put a time limit on this, like a three-month temporary renewal until this is, you know...
You could, you could, sure, you could change the timeframe.
That way we can try to expedite this and get this cleared up.
This is true.
I, I have to agree with, with Joe. I, I would prefer to renew this for a time period and give the building official and zoning official opportunity to investigate and determine if there are any code violations or if not. And that way, we haven't granted the license for a year and then are going backwards now because we've identified those things. If there aren't any, if there are no building violations or, or code violations, then so be it, but if there are, then we'll know about that within three months.
Yeah, and hopefully this will expedite both parties to get moving and do what they got to do, and hopefully rectify it, so everybody will be happy.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Solicitor, correct me if I'm wrong, but their license renewal is going to be on, what, November 14th?
That license came due in November. I believe there's something that moved it on there, I can't remember now, but it comes with your regular November licenses. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, it says the license renewal will be heard on 11/14/2016, so I'm assuming that when... So, so am I correct in assuming, though, that if we grant a temporary license, essentially it's going to go to November 14th, 2017, or whatever that date may be in November? So it's essentially a three-month extension is what we're looking at, at this point in time?
I'm, I'm fine with that, although I'm just questioning because it, you know, there is this, there is this section under the license requirements from the administrative subdivision that says, "The licenses shall be valid for one year, expiring on June 30th."
Yeah, I'm looking at that, too. Nancy thinks that that might have been changed, but it just didn't get updated. But, you know, I think if you wanted to do with a shorter period, I think it would be better to put a, a date on that, just because there may be an issue.
Madam President.
Mr. Lebo.
On the first page, there's really no, we can't really do much. It's all signed off. Sue Gill signed it, Kelly signed it, Neil Hall signed it as zoning. They're all set, there's no violations. How are we going to, now, today, this was on July 19th, page one, how are we going to not give this guy his license, maybe deal with it, but it's signed off right here? Everything's all good.
That's the planning board. That's the planning board.
That's just copy, Seth.
It's on July 19th.
At the bottom, it's copied to Neil. We don't have, in this packet, we do not have a letter from Neil saying it's all set.
It just means they got a copy of that decision, that's all.
From, the, the letter is from Stuart Hardy to the town council and the zoning official.
So none of these, none of these answers were charged, then? That's what I'm seeing. I'm just reading it wrong. Am I right? Correct? Okay.
It's, the only thing, the, the only thing that the planning board looked at on that, the only thing that was in their purview to look at was fixing the lot lines.
The lot lines, okay.
Which they did, and they, that's, they're just saying, okay, they fixed the lot lines.
But any license is subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Correct. I just thought they had already signed off on it when I read it.
Neil? No. Okay, so do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to grant them a temporary license for a three-month period to end on November the 14th. Is that the date you have, Peter?
Probably better to do November 30th, just so they can come in on the November meeting and...
Okay, November 30th. Provided they meet all legal requirements.
Second.
Well, that's what Neil's going to look into between now, pending, yeah, pending.
Okay, so the motion is to grant Countryview Estates a temporary license...
Till November 30th.
Till November 30th.
Yes.
In order to have the building official slash zoning official review the situation and report back to the council.
Do we need, do we need a separate motion, we don't, to ask Neil to, or to ask the town? Okay.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Yeah, I seconded.
Sorry. Now we have two. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? unanimous?
Could I hear the vote again? I, I couldn't hear it from here.
It's a unanimous vote to grant temporary license to November 30th in order to have the building zoning official get back to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, C5, Alex Artega Pelagius Ice Cream, Kentucky Rhode Island, request renewal of peddler's license subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. Artega here? Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I have a question.
Ms. Hilton.
Um, I'm looking on the back of this, on their application, and their retail sales permit says that it expired June 30th, 2017?
We had, we had contact with the state, though. It's, um, they've already received it. He just hasn't actually received the form.
But it's, but it's renewed.
And he's going to bring it in before we give it.
Okay.
Mr. Cadira?
I hope it's for samples.
I ask that the clerk just please reach out and remind Mr. Artega that he is not allowed to go to our beaches or our recreation facilities. Because they have done that in the past.
Where does he go, John? Where's he supposed to be?
He's not supposed to be at any beach or any recreation facility.
So this is just for him to drive around the streets? Is that what you're telling him?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's already a town ordinance.
I thought I had seen him at the Bogomash Recreation Area.
Yes, where he should, he should not have been there.
If he was on the road.
If he was on, if he was on the road, and he, and he can go in the back. He can go in the back to Sandy Woods. And I don't think there's a town ordinance to keep him out of the library, but there is for, for, for the parks. And it's not so much Bogomash that concerns the folks in town. It's, it's really Town Farm, Fort Barton, because that, then he takes away from the, the youth organizations and their concession stands.
Thank you.
So noted.
Do I have a motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, grant renewal of the peddler's license subject to meeting all legal requirements for Alex Artega Pelagius Ice Cream, Kentucky Rhode Island.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The appointments and resignations. D1, Library Board of Trustees, one unexpired term to 10/15/2018. At the last meeting, we interviewed Melinda Foley Marcello. So we have Carol Herman here, 11106 Main Road. She's also seeking the appointment to this position.
Hi.
Good evening. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like this position?
Sure. My name is Carol Herman, and I earned a professional library degree, which is a master's in library and information studies in May of 2006. And since August of 2006, I've been working as a school librarian. Through my memberships in a variety of professional organizations, including the American Library Association, I keep current on trends and developments in all types of libraries, including public, academic, and school libraries. I served on the library building committee as secretary from 2002 to 2008. I then served on the school committee from 2008 to 2016, the last four years as vice chair. On a more personal note, I've been a regular library user since I moved to town 25 years ago. My three children have all participated in library programs from their preschool years through their teens and enjoyed them. I'm a member of the Friends of Tiverton Libraries. I'm a member of the Rhode Island Coalition of Library Advocates. And I'm seeking appointment, not just because I feel I have some relevant professional experience to share, but also because I strongly believe that libraries are essential to our democracy because they provide free access to information to all residents and that free access is necessary for an informed citizenry. I also believe public libraries can help bring communities together, both through a variety of programming that they offer and the public meeting space that they offer.
Have you attended any of their trustee meetings?
When I was on the building committee, we would at times meet with the board. More recently, I just reviewed their agendas and the minutes from about the last six months of their meetings, and I did have telephone conversations with two current members of the board.
And one of the concerns with all of our boards and commissions is that people make a commitment and can attend the meetings, that they're available and can be there and make that commitment to attend each meeting.
And I did hear that from the current board members. I still work full-time, so I do not leave town for any extended periods of time. And looking back on the eight years I served on the school committee and we had two meetings a month, I cannot remember ever having missed a meeting.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? In our policy, do we wait to the next meeting to appoint?
So unless you waive the policy, it would be the meeting after this meeting, since this would be when the last interview was conducted.
Madam...
Ms. Hilton?
President, and thank you to the applicant. And I know it is our policy to wait, so that's fine, but I would like to bring up one other possibility before we appoint. Because I too have had a couple of phone conversations with library board members, and it occurs to me that we're appointing folks to this library board, which runs a, you know, half a million dollar business over there, and we give them a significant grant every year. And we never really asked the library board what they need. And one of the questions that the president just brought up, and it didn't really occur to me until I heard this, is that, and I don't know that we spoke with the other applicant about this, is the issue of their having a quorum and being able to hold meetings because they have some members who are in Florida for a part of the year. So it occurred to me that, that, you know, before we sort of appoint somebody to the library board, which is not an entity that we have any control over whatsoever, it might be good for us to have, actually have a conversation with the library board, or at least the chair of the library board, and find out what the issues they are having. Are they having quorum issues? Is there a particular skill set that they'd be interested in? You know, do, are they looking for certain things to round out their board? I mean, our boards and commissions, we kind of have an idea, a little bit, of what they're looking for because they report to us. I don't know that we've ever actually asked the library board what they need. So I'm wondering whether or not that would be a good conversation to have and make sure that if they have any issues, we've fairly asked all the applicants, you know, to respond to those things.
If I remember correctly, I did ask the other applicant, Linda Foley Marcello, because it was one of those issues that is hitting a lot of our committees, boards and commissions that, with attendance. So, but certainly we can, we can vote on this particular item at the next town council meeting. I don't think there's any, I did not hear of any rush to get it done tonight.
Madam President, I just have one comment to add. I, I think you should realize that I had an email received from, I've forgotten her name, Murrow, I think her last name was. And the concern was that when we, you, when the council interviewed Melinda Foley Marcello last week, I mentioned that I had another call on one coming in, which was Carol Herman's. And she had requested why we allow them to go on. But it has been the council's policy for me to just keep taking in the applications, and I just keep putting it on here. I did explain it, but I just wanted you to realize that as long as applications come in, because when we come to recreation, I have another one on my desk that came in after this. But it is the policy that you still want me to keep taking them, so I keep informing you that I have more. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't like at a cutoff and trying to put some people in.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you for your time.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan.
I, I would agree with Counselor Hilton that I think, I would also like to hear from the Board of Directors, or the Library Board of Directors, to see what kind of people that they were looking for. Because as far as I'm concerned, the two people that we've had before us are both excellent. So, you know, and I, to me, those are the kinds of people that we want. But I also would like to know what the Board of, of Directors are interested in, especially given that there were some problems in the last budget season. So I think it would be a useful conversation to have. And what, you know, if we could have, if we could have it, if we could do it with the town council or certain, I'm not sure how that would work. I mean, we did it with the planning board, so I could imagine we could do it with the library board as well.
Certainly we can reach out to the chair of the, Greg, Mr. Jones, or Dr. Jones. We can certainly reach out to him to provide us some feedback.
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards.
Perhaps it would make sense to add this to the workshop agenda for the next council meeting, for the goal setting meeting.
It's a workshop, so there's no votes.
Well, I think we're just looking for information from the chair of the Library Board of Trustees. Just a thought.
What would you do? Ask him to come?
Yeah, if he could just come and talk to us, you know, before we get into the goal setting workshop.
I think that would be, I, I, I think it, I think it would be good for us to find out what the library board needs.
And then it wouldn't be a delay, since we're already meeting.
But we, we would not be appointing until the next regular town council meeting.
Right, right. Yes, but it would just give us more information.
And certainly, a workshop is not necessarily televised. I would prefer it go to the next regular meeting so that it is open discussion.
Oh.
And available to the public.
The, you mean the discussion with the library?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, that's, either way.
I defer to your expertise.
I just want to make sure this is open and transparent, so it would be better if we had it at a regular council meeting rather than a workshop. Okay, so on this particular item, we will continue to the next regular town council meeting. D2, Planning Board, one vacancy and two reappointments, three-year terms to 7/15/2020. 2A, Susan Gill, 1392 Main Road, seeking reappointment. 2B, Brett Pelletier, Evans Avenue, seeking reappointment. And 2C, Steve Farias, 232 Warren Avenue, seeking new appointment.
Madam President, Steve Farias has sent me an email, and he has withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Let's see, I think, yes, Susan?
Hi. Hi, I'm back. I'm here tonight for the council after having two weeks to think about the last meeting. I've thought a lot about how I want to approach this and what I wanted to do, to say to you tonight. I think what I want to do first is tell you more about myself. So what I will give you is my work experience. I started out in Seattle, a university hospital as a registered nurse. I worked on a medical ward and in a medical ICU. I lived in Southern California. I worked at UCLA in the medical intensive care unit, treating very ill people, life and death situations. I joined the Navy, was commissioned as a Navy lieutenant, and I served at Bethesda Naval Hospital in Bethesda, Maryland, in the critical care units and the medical ICU. I had lived, I worked in Georgetown after leaving the Navy and worked at Georgetown Hospital in the dialysis unit. I worked at George Washington University Hospital on a medical ward and in the medical ICU, taking care of AIDS patients in the early days of that disease. So I've had a lot of life experiences, I've had a lot of work experiences, I've had life and death experiences, and I'm able to handle a lot of sophisticated information, a lot of material. I think the other, the other job that I've had is I owned and operated a business that grossed over $500,000 a year. I managed 10 to 12 employees, and I worked 60, 70 hours a week. Both times that I left the workforce, it was to devote more time to my family. I raised four children with my husband and multiple dogs. And I think what's difficult for me is to be characterized as a stay-at-home mom. That's never been how I've seen myself. That's not who I am or what I am, and that's not all that I am. I believe that the planning board needs different kinds of people. I think you need professional people, but we also have solicitor, we have engineer, we have a DPW engineer that knows a lot about the town. And we have those people to, to fall back on or to rely on in addition. I think other professionals on the planning board are also important. But I think you need people with a broader perspective sometimes to look at what's best for the town and how to plan for the town. And that's what people with different experiences and different backgrounds can bring to it. I've always advocated on behalf of the town. I don't have a hidden agenda, a special agenda, a special interest. I've, in the time, the last five years, I have probably attended almost every commission meeting in town, except probably the cemetery commission. I was thinking about it, it's probably the one I haven't attended. I've learned a lot about the town. I've spent a lot of time learning about the town, and I think that's how you get a perspective on what the town's needs are and what's important to the people in this town. I think that I have still something to bring to the planning board. I think I can be a participant. I like to think outside of the box. Sometimes I push the envelope a little bit. That's usually when the solicitor draws me back from the edge of what's, what I can and can't do or what I suggest. I think my time in the Navy, I learned chain of command. I learned respect for rules. I learned it has to be written or it doesn't exist. And I think those are all important traits that you want for someone on the planning board. I don't think you can make arbitrary decisions. The job that we do, we, we make those decisions based on the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinances. It's not always just what we want. The other thing about the planning board is I am only one vote among nine, so my vote doesn't determine the outcome of what the planning board is, but it creates a balance. And I think, Mr. Edwards, I would take some opposition with your comments. I think you were very disingenuous when you thanked me for my service, but you asked me openly and publicly to resign, and you, Mr. LeBeau, as well. I think in all the appointments that I've seen over the last five years, I don't think anybody's ever been publicly asked to resign when they've been seeking reappointment. And I think that's pretty stunning. I was taken aback. I would say the next day I was pretty low, given how it came across. I knew there would be two votes against me when I walked up here, but I did not anticipate the venom that was exhibited towards me. And I can't explain it. I mean, I think it's mystifying, Mr. Edwards, that you, I can't recall since you've been on the council that you've attended one planning board meeting. So I don't know how you could possibly quantify or qualify the work that I've done, the effort that I put into it, the diligence that I undertake in each meeting, and how much time I prepare. I worked under Kate Micho for a year and a half, and I learned a great deal from her. And for the last year, I haven't had someone to rely on, so I've had to spend a lot of time with the subdivision regulations, a lot of time with the zoning ordinances, and I ask a lot of questions. Sometimes it gets a little annoying to people, I know, but that's how you learn, and that's how you do your job. So I think with that, I think that's... So I think with that, I think that's what I wanted to say. I didn't expect it to be such a painful process. I didn't expect, I just didn't expect this. But I've grown a tougher hide because of this. I am still interested to serve and I will abide by what the majority of the council votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier? Hi, Brett. I think you have an unusual situation if I've read the email.
Well, I'm an unusual person, so it's fitting. Yeah, so I think I'm, what I'm doing is giving an offer to the Town Council. I didn't want to apply for reappointment for three years without telling you that I would likely resign before the end of that term. But you have currently three vacancies on the Planning Board and oftentimes at least one or sometimes two recusals for conflicts of interest, which I will frankly say makes it impossible to do some of the Planning Board's business. In the short time that I've been there, that has been something we've experienced. And actually, me coming on the board alleviated that issue in one instance. So I will be happy to serve until September, but know that at the end of that term, I would, I would need to resign. It gives you the opportunity to find some qualified replacements and also, we're in the middle of Twin River, we're in the middle of Tiverton Heights, we're in the middle of a lot of things that are ongoing. We're finalizing the Comprehensive Community Plan edits on Thursday.
It's a lot of work.
It is, and it's, it's, it's technical and it's detailed and it's, it takes a while to get up to speed, so.
Any questions from the council? Thank you for your offer.
Thank you.
Ms. DiMederos?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Susan Gill on the Planning Board for a term of, for a term to expire 7/15/2020.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further comments?
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau.
I would like to put off this appointment for Sue Gill till I can get a word in with Kelly. I called today to try to get her to the meeting. There's some issues going on, outstanding issues that I need answers to. And I had a couple cancellations from people who had meetings that couldn't be here tonight. And it's just, it's not fair to the town to have a vote right now.
Madam President.
Madam President.
I'm not done.
Okay. One at a time, please.
I don't know. I talked to the Solicitor and he advised me that none of this can be done in the executive session, it has to be done on open floor. I'm really not comfortable doing it in open floor, but I will if I have to. But there are, there's outstanding problems that need to be solved.
Why don't you tell us, Red? I'm sorry, but.
Why didn't I tell you?
Wait a minute. Excuse me.
If you're done.
I'm not.
Okay.
We don't want to get into a pissing contest like the last meeting.
No, I, excuse me. Madam President, I wouldn't have called that a pissing, there was no contest last meeting. The applicants sat quietly while Counselor LeBeau said his thing.
Excuse me, Ms. Hilton. And again, interruption from council members when I have the floor. I have the floor at this point in time. You have to be recognized by the Town Council President in order to speak. Mr. LeBeau has made some comments. I have now stopped the meeting because I have had comments from both Counselor DiMederos and Counselor Hilton, as well as Ms. Ryan. So, we don't want to get into a pissing contest on the council, not with the residents, although that's not appropriate either. So we all have, we have one vote on this reappointment. We each have to make our own decision on that. Mr. LeBeau, you had two weeks to gather information and present it tonight.
Can I, can I present what I have?
It.
What is it? What is it?
Is there a document that you can present to the council?
No, but there's some people here who would like to speak. But you know what? It's all going to be for nothing, anyway. So you know what? Why don't we just go to vote? You four, do what you got to do, or five, do what you got to do, or six, do what you got to do. You know what my vote is, it's not going to change.
Again.
So I'm going to withdraw everything I have to say. You guys do your thing.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau. Is there any other comments from any other member of the Town Council? We have a motion and a second on the floor to reappoint Susan Gill to the Planning Board for a term to expire 7/15/2020. All those in favor? Opposed? Susan Gill has been reappointed to the Planning Board. We have Brett Pelletier, who has graciously authored to seek reappointment for a short period of time through September 1st. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I have a question.
Is that, did you want to have a question?
I just have a question.
I mean, Ms. Ryan?
I thought, I thought we have to appoint him as if we're appointing him for a term and then he sends in a letter of resignation. Is that not correct?
So, that was, that was my question was going to be.
Solicitors respond.
Are we setting a precedent? That's what my question was going to be. Are we setting a precedent by doing that?
We'd say the same things, but I think he was tired of talking. You've got two ways, two ways to go here. In our opinion, you can't appoint someone for a set term that is not set forth in the Enabling Act. So you can do one of two things here. You can reappoint him for the entire term, and then when Brett resigns, he resigns and the seat is open, and you have that understanding so that you can, you know, send out the applications wherever you have. The other way to do it is just to not reappoint him, under the understanding that he will serve until a replacement is appointed for him. You can do one of two ways. I'd actually suggest you do it the first way so that there's no questions with some of the issues that are going on.
Very good, thank you.
That's why, that's why you get paid.
Do I have a motion to reappoint?
Madam President.
Mr. Pelletier.
Oh.
Ms. Ryan.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Brett Pelletier. Is that one also until 7/15/2020?
Yep.
Okay, so that would be my motion, that he's appointed to the Planning Board.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five-two. D-3, Recreation Commission, three vacancies, three-year terms to 4/15/2020. Rachel McGarty, 64 Cherry Lane, seeking new appointment. Is Ms. McGarty here?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
And why would, you're seeking appointment to the Recreation Commission?
Okay, thank you. My name's Rachel McGarty. I'm a pharmacist by trade. I received my doctorate in pharmacy from the University of Rhode Island back in 2000. I've been working as a pharmacist at Charlton Memorial Hospital for the last 15 years. For the last two and a half years, I've been working as pharmacy manager, and currently I have greater than 50 employees reporting, both pharmacists and pharmacy technicians who report to me. I'm responsible for making sure that the day-to-day operations and all of our patients are taken care of by this staff. Just in May of this year, I received my MBA, my Master's of Business Administration, from the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth as well. So that's a little bit about myself. I'm here in Tiverton raising a family with two small children who are school age, and I'm seeking appointment to this committee. When I heard there was a vacancy, I thought it would be a good fit. My family has benefited from several of the activities that were sponsored and organized by the Recreation Committee. My son attended one of the summertime activities that was organized by the committee a few years back. My daughter's very excited, but a little bit too young, so when her time comes, we'll sign her up as well. We attended the Christmas tree lighting this past December, and I think it's a committee that's doing a very good job, and I'd like to join their efforts.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards?
The Solicitor just commented, are you an Atlanta Falcons fan?
Yes, I am.
That's right, we won the last Super Bowl, so you got my vote.
Any other questions from the council?
She's also been to Recreation.
She's been to Recreation meetings?
I did, so I took the time before I turned in the application to attend their last meeting, get a feel for the members, what they're discussing, what their issues are, how well that particular group works together, what the flavor of the meeting is, and just to make sure that that was the right fit for me. And so after attending the meeting, I decided to go ahead and submit my application.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Rachel McGarty to the Recreation Commission for the term ending, is it a two-year term?
Three-year.
Three-year term. Ending.
4/15/2020.
2020, there you go.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Madam President, do we need to waive our normal procedure on this one?
I'm sorry, that, you could, you should waive, have a motion to waive the procedure.
I'll make a motion, we waive our normal procedure.
I'll second that.
Due to quorum problems.
This is true. Motion's been made on second to waive our policy. All those in favor? Ananimos?
Now I'll make a motion to appoint Rachel McGarty to a three-year term ending 2020 to the Recreation Committee.
Very good. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Ananimos. Welcome to the Recreation Commission.
Go Patriots.
And Madam President, I have another application that came in after the time for recreation. It'll be on next week.
We've got plenty of opens.
Yep, now just two vacancies. Excellent. E, unfinished business. E1, Town Administrator, discussion and possible vote on opening Grinnell's Beach. Mr. McGreevy?
Thank you. One of the questions you asked was to do a little bit of a financial analysis of the costs and revenue that we might generate if we open the beach beginning next weekend and keeping it open for about six weeks or to the end of the summer season. The memo you have in front of you is from our Recreation Director, Jonathan Perry, who went through and looked at what the current budget is, what we'll be spending at Fogland's anyway, and the remaining, and then what we probably would spend with a three-day, Friday, Saturday, Sunday opening of Grinnell's for the next six weeks. So it, there's about a $2,700 deficit that we'd have to find money from somewhere else. But from a overall perspective, we would expect to make somewhere in the $4,000 to $5,000 range, based on history and based on what we're seeing at Fogland's for the rest of the year. So the town would be a little bit in the red, although the Recreation Budget would, I mean, excuse me, in the black, but the Recreation Budget would still be in the red. So from a, to the broader question, from a financial perspective, opening the beach is kind of a wash at this point from, in your decision. I think the real factor is, do you want the beach open for purposes of having supervision there to maintain what's going on and to use a town asset?
And also, I believe that you were to confirm when it would be available to be open. And actually, I think the Recreation Commission was also to verify that they had everything in place in order to open, including a swim.
Swim line.
Swim line.
The swim line was ordered, and I've seen the email traffic, I saw, we're waiting on an actual date that it will arrive. I don't know, John, did you get anything earlier?
I expected by the end of the week. The order was placed Fri, last Friday, and they verbally told me one day to produce it, and then a day or two to ship. But through the email, once the order was placed, they did state that it was two to three days to manufacture it, one day shipping from Maine.
Okay. So we have that coming in. We have availability of attendance and lifeguards for the Grinnell's Beach. And the only issue is the budget and be able to find 28, around 28, $2,800, 28,000, $2,800 to open the beach. So is there any other outstanding issues?
Madam President, it'd probably be easier to find the 2,800 than it would to be lifeguards because we're having a hard time finding lifeguards. We only have two as of right now. So we're working on.
We had three.
We had three, but we found out today that he is not surf, beach certified. He's a swimming pool lifeguard, so he has to go and take the test so he can be beach certified. So we just found that out today. He, I guess the paperwork that was turned in, Mary Lou got the paperwork and she didn't notice that on the application, so we just found out today. So now we called him and told him he's going to go and take the test so that he can get certified. But as of right now, we only have two lifeguards. So anybody out there that wants to be a lifeguard, we can use them.
As long as they're certified.
Yeah.
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards?
Thank you. Is Director Anderson still here? There he is. The question I have is, do we have a timetable on when the abutment project is going to start and are they going to occupy that parking lot? Because if that's the case, then I think this is kind of a moot point because the whole primary revenue generator is the parking lot.
Right. The abutments on due, I believe it's coming back, I want to say the eighth, the bids. How long DOT takes to review those, approve the final, you know, first I have to bring it to the council, get approval from you, get approval from DOT. If everything is hunky-dory, then we can issue it. I'm not expecting the project to start until September at this point. And then there was talk at the pre-bid there from a couple of vendors that they may not even start this year, may wait till the March, April and start the project then and get it all done in our timeframe of December. So it all depends on what the prices look like and everything else. So at best, maybe we have through the month of August for the, because at that point, we're going to have to turn that, the parking lot over to them for, to staging area.
Thank you.
So again, I think my question for the Town Administrator is, are we ready to go? Is there a date certain that we, because as soon as we say it's open, they assume, it'll be assumed it's open tomorrow, so.
Well, we don't have, given the information on the lifeguards, we don't have a date certain until we have a lifeguard. The only other option potentially for the council is not to give a date certain, but to give when, you know, all the logistics are in place.
So our next council meeting is on the 14th of August, which basically means, oh, 15th because of the holiday, which means that's already half of August gone.
And I'm going to have to put out more advertising for the lifeguard. I put one out a couple of weeks ago, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, we got some bad rep from last year, so.
If we, if the third, Jonathan, do you?
My name's Jonathan Perry. I'm the Director of Recreation for the Town of Tiverton. So the lifeguard that we found out today was not state certified, but the test is actually this Thursday. So as soon as he takes that test, as long as he passes it, the certification is good immediately, so he would be able to start on Friday. With three lifeguards, I can staff Fogland Beach and Grinnell's Beach. I have enough gate attendance, I have enough lifeguards. So as far as staffing goes, given he passes his test on Thursday, we will have enough staff to staff it. But I do need another lifeguard. I want another lifeguard for purposes of callouts and, and, you know, things come up. But other than that, we're pretty much good to go as far as staffing goes. So that's not an issue.
Yeah, so there's an element of risk here.
Yeah, so there's an element of risk here. And we're, you know, there's a single point of failure. If this guy doesn't pass his test, we can't do it right away.
Does he need a tutor?
Does he need a tutor? You're going to swing the wrong side. There you go.
I passed that test. So my thought a little bit is, if we can open the beach, I think we should, in part because I think people would enjoy it. But I also think that it would help with a little bit what's going on down there. Again, it's, you know. But if we do open the beach, I have two questions for both the council and DPW Director Anderson. The parking situation down there, in the absence of the beach being open on the weekends, is bedlam. It's completely out of control. People are parked all over Main Road, they're wedged in every place, and they're parking in the beach driveway on both sides in the driveway. They're parking in front of the gate that's closed, even though it says no parking, they're wedged in that little thing. But some of the worst things they're doing is parking it right in front of the gas station property. So I was down there the other day on a weekend, and I had actually gotten there before it got too nutty. I went to clean up garbage on the beach I'd parked, and when I went to pull out, I thought, this is a total disaster waiting to happen, because you can no longer see at all, and it's bad enough for cars, but I actually thought to myself, if there is a person on the bicycle coming, I have no prayer of not hitting them. I mean, it's bad. So if we were to open the beach, or maybe even if we weren't, I'm wondering whether or not we should move the Jersey barriers that are in front of the gas station now to where they're, to where the new curb will be when the project is done, so that A, we can work in there, and B, we'll eliminate that illegal parking right in front of the gas station site. And then whether or not, if we are going to open, even if it's only Friday, Saturday, Sunday, if we're going to open the beach on the weekends, maybe we should get a couple more no parking signs for the driveway that says, you know, you can't park in the driveway, because I can see, even once the beach is open, the poor gate attendant, because there'll be people who'll say, well, here, now I've gotten used to parking in the driveway. I'm going to park in the driveway instead of parking in the parking lot so I don't have to pay, or I'm going to pull into that little, like, four space area. I don't know if we should block that off and get some no parking signs for those, so when the beach is open, people understand they actually do have to park in the parking lot. And if they're from out of state and have to pay, they have to pay, but, because then I can see with people in the parking lot and then the illegal parking on top of it, it'll be really a mess.
So I would say that we could leave that to the town administrator and the DPW Director to resolve any issues with the gas station property.
Madam President, you just can't throw parkin', no parking signs up. You have to check with the chief, because you're going to, that doesn't make any sense. If the chief of police doesn't say it's no parking, then you just can't throw them up willy-nilly.
No, 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 no one's proposing that, but I guess what I'm proposing, and it's fine with me, is that the DPW Director and the administrator are aware that they have the council's blessing to address, if we're going to open the beach, the illegal parking issue, and that, you know, the chips will fall where they may as far as the people who have been parking illegally who don't like it, that their illegal parking spaces are gone.
Madam President.
Mr. Perry?
I think if they move the gate up to Main Road, about five feet in from Main Road, and put a gate there, that would alleviate that problem of people parking in there. I've discussed that with the administrator before. I think the gate just has to be moved up closer to the road, and that'll eliminate that problem. Because when you go there at nine o'clock in the morning, you got 10 cars parked in front of the gate, and you got to go find them, because they're fishing, to come back, move their cars, so we can open the gate to get in. So I think if they just move that up, that would alleviate that whole problem.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I just have one question for the administrator and then a statement, if that's all right. What are we charging for parking violations?
Well, offhand, I don't know, and unfortunately, Chief Lakey had to step out on a police matter. But we, I did ask Chief Lakey earlier in the week to, before this past weekend, to ramp up enforcement for the current illegal parking, whether the barriers are there or not. And I don't have the figures. He was going to actually present them tonight if the question came up, but I think we're up to like 28 tickets for the month, without really having a baseline to tell you what that's based against. But what I do want to do is have, you know, ramped up enforcement along there for the rest of the summer, regardless of whether it's closed or open. And it's my understanding that when the project is done, the gate does come closer to the, to the street. Is that correct?
It does. It comes much closer to the street.
Councilor Perry, if your, your suggestion is that we figure out how to move it up there now.
You may have to put a chain across, you know, with a sign on it.
I'm sure that our professional engineer could probably figure something out.
Madam President, the only thing I would say is that I would assume that if we ramp up enforcement on the illegal parking, whatever gain we're going to make on the parking for the month of August, which it seems now it's logistically impossible or logistically improbable, would be far outweighed by the tickets the police department would be able to write. And for that reason, I think that we should just leave the beach closed, so we can get the construction process squared away, done, and then we can open full bore next year.
Well, the problem with that is that we might not open it next year, because we'll have the Stone Bridge abutment project going. So how about we compromise on this, where we allow the beach to open, and for residents and non-residents to visit the beach. And as far as the swimming goes, that would be subject to availability of lifeguard. And when there's no lifeguard, I'm assuming that you would put up a sign, no swimming.
There's no lifeguard on duty right now. There's two signs.
We can only, we could.
Can't open without a lifeguard?
We could open up the parking lot and just say, there's no lifeguard on duty, the whole thing's open. But having just, I mean, just in this little bit of time, if, if we open that gate and say, it's open, no lifeguard on duty, the, it will be probably enormously popular with a lot of people who live not in the state of Rhode Island. And the maintenance of it, I mean, as it is, I mean, Bill can tell you, I mean, the dunes that have gotten built have all got knocked down. People are picking up the boulders from the jetty and walking off with them. I mean, it's, if we open it and we have no one there whatsoever to supervise it, it's a lot of damage. It's just, people don't take care of it. But if we allow it to be open, or open the parking lot, when we have supervision, when we have a lifeguard and a gate attendant, then you have a much better chance that, you know, people are going to behave during the day, because there are people there watching them.
Well, it sounds like we can't legally open it without a lifeguard, so.
You can't charge.
You can't charge without a lifeguard.
And I, no charging is, like, just, what's the point?
All I would offer, though, is if, you know, we get a lifeguard sometime in the next couple of weeks, or the next week after this test that Jonathan was talking about, it'll be three weeks till we get another council together to vote on it. And definitely, we're down to three weeks of potential revenue.
Okay, our only other option is to make the July 31st meeting a regular, a special meeting, so that we can vote on this particular topic.
Well, let me ask a question. If Jonathan says that as soon as Friday, he would have, if potentially, if on Friday, he has a third lifeguard, then we do have the staff to vote to open it Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays going forward, from now until as long as they're available. So, I mean, I don't think we ever thought we'd have enough people to open it all week long, but I think we thought we would have enough people to open it Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Madam President.
Mr. McGreevy?
To address that, what I, what I'm looking for is authorization to open the beach when we have all the bits and pieces together. It's equally possible that on August 15th, we lose a lifeguard, and we'd have to close it after, after authorizing it to be open. So clearly, we're not going to open it if we don't meet all the legal requirements and safety requirements, either opening it or keeping it open. So unless you're particularly concerned that by having a vote that has no conditions on it, that people are going to be running there assuming it's open, I suppose that's a legitimate concern. But if the vote is, you know, is, it will be open when we have lifeguard, staff, safety lines in place. And that'll be apparent when, when those things come in the mail, and we have the lifeguard who passes the test.
I think that makes sense.
Mr. Anderson, did you?
All I just want to say is, if we do open it, not this weekend, I would recommend that we, because my, my thought is, I'm going to barrel off that entrance in the front anyway, because of the Tiverton days, and I may even put barrels up in front of the Jersey barrier, so people don't park there. Just with a construction sign on it saying, construction, don't park, no parking. Because it's going to be, it was crazy last weekend. I actually had calls from the police asking to put no parking signs up in that entire area, because it was, I guess, there was all sorts of issues, so. So August 1st, the following weekend's fine, if that's what's chosen, you know, but that's not, just not this weekend.
John, did you have any further?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear that, that the logistical things that need to be done. And that figure is pretty close. If we open it for 20 days, it's $165 a day to staff, staff the beach. So if it's 20 days, you're looking at $3,300. Every weekend less than that, you know, you're going to go down $400 bucks. So it would be about $2,800 if we opened, were able to open August 1st, and open three days a week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Because that would put us through, that's putting us through September 4th, Labor Day. That would be our last day. The lifeguard chair has to be brought down there. The safety lining, float rope has to come in, and then get put out. So hopefully, the harbor master can help us with that as soon as it gets here. Tickets have to be ordered from the, from the ticket producer. I should be able to get those rather quickly. I probably will only need about 500, because we do need day passes, because the current ones we have say Foglin Beach Arm, with Foglin Beach fees. And hopefully, your vote didn't change my Foglin Beach fees. I don't think it did, or I would have stood up.
No, it didn't.
So I just, I just wanted to be clear, and I'm hoping that maybe we can, the council can maybe make a vote to allow the town administrator to open the beach at his discretion to, at a date to be announced by him. And he can do that once everything's in place. But at least the council has voted and passed on that authority to our town administrator to open the beach when we're ready, if and when we're ready.
Thank you, John. Well, it's whatever's the pleasure of the council. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion, that we give the administrator permission to open the beach when he deems it necessary or able to.
And at hours he deems necessary.
And put all those barrels out there where it's necessary, please. Well, so. So I have a motion in a second. What? It's getting late at night.
Did you get the second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
I just want, well, just listening to what Bill said, that, that's part of the motion as well, that. That he, no, but he said specifically not to do it this weekend if possible, so. That's, you're in agreement with that?
DPW Director advises that we don't open it. I'm going to listen to that.
Okay, I'm, okay, then I'm fine. No, somebody else.
Any other discussion? Gee, second the motion, so. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? No. Unanimous. E2 Fire Chief, request approval to purchase two 2017 Chevrolet Tahos from New Year. Chevrolet of Albany, New York, for $77,868, $856 to be paid using FTR-approved budget and grants.
Yes, if I may, I'm going to address item number three as well, since it's sort of a package concept here. So as you recall, from two council meetings ago, maybe more, Chief Lloyd had a request in to buy just the replacement for the chief's car. And based on some questions concerning the proper use of the meds money as part of that purchase, and just the cost of the vehicle in general, we asked for a continuance. In the intervening time, actually, speaking with the chief, I actually asked him to sort of think bigger on the problem, because I knew he had a grant request in to Rhode Island EMA, Emergency Management Agency, for a specific grant for a vehicle, for a command vehicle. He was waiting for that to come in. It has come in. It's, I think it was originally requested like $60,000, but it came in as $41,000. So I also asked him to verify with, you know, no doubt, what the meds money can be used for, and not only from the original grant authorization letter, which you have in 2011, but also a letter we just received the other day from Department of Health. It clarifies that, that this money can be used for the purposes that we are looking to do. So with this larger pot of money, including the money that was provided in the budget for two vehicles, this really allowed us to replace the entire fleet, to standardize the fleet of his command vehicles. Two of them would be Tahos, and one would be a Chevy Equinox, so they're all Chevy vehicles. It also gives us an opportunity to have, for at least the two, new vehicles, new vehicles and not necessarily used ones. The, the vehicle, the Equinox, which would become the marshal's vehicle, is a 2014, but it looks to be, and the marshal couldn't speak to it, looks to be a good vehicle for the money. So the funding streams for these two vehicles, for the two Tahos, would be $41,000 from the grant, $26,000 from the non-reoccurring capital investment, and about $11,000, $12,000 for the difference that comes from the meds funding. The funding for the 2014 Chevy Equinox, which would be the fire marshal's vehicle, is $14,000 in the budget, and then augmented with about $2,500 or so from the smoke detector money, the fees that are collected on smoke detectors. Again, the rationale being that that money is appropriate to be used for the fire marshal's vehicle. So that's the funding stream. I think it's a, it's a, it's a pretty neat idea that we can, at no extra cost to the taxpayer, we can, we upgrade the fire department's fleet of command vehicles that are, and I'll let the captain speak to the, to the details of the vehicle, but they are, they will come pretty much ready to go. They will have extended warranties on them. And, you know, a new vehicle is sometimes a lot easier to maintain than used vehicles when we have to do it that way. So Captain, if you want to come up, if there's any questions from me or for them, happy to take them.
Hi.
Hello.
Any questions from the council?
Are we piggybacking with another department? Because I see Midway Fire District. Are we piggybacking with them to get this?
Yes. It's an existing bid. Yes.
So we're going like for five vehicles or something like that? Is that what they're doing?
I'm not sure. It's from Midway Fire District in New York.
Oh, okay.
I actually have a copy of that bid, if you need that, but it is a piggyback.
Any other questions from the council? Go ahead, John.
On page two, Paul, it says reimbursement made via electronic transfer.
Which page do we double?
I got page two, the second page on the first sheet, the next page.
Oh, the R I E M A?
Yeah.
Second page, okay.
Yeah, it says the grant number, and then it says Tiverton Fire Department. In the bottom right, it says reimbursement will be made via electronic transfer. What is, is, are we reimbursing them for, you know?
I think.
Is that trading in vehicles? What, you know?
No, my, my assumption of that is that is how we will receive the money from EMA. If I'm wrong on that, correct me?
That's correct. We received the grant years ago. It was the same style grant. We purchased the vehicle, they reimbursed for the vehicle. It's the same.
So will they reimburse the full amount?
Yes. It's a $41,000 grant, yes. It's a $41,000 grant, yes.
And everything gets reimbursed, we get?
Let me assure the council, we're, if we find at the 11th hour and the 11th minute and the 59th second that we're not getting all the money, we won't do this.
You do need the reassurance, because this has happened in the past, that again.
No, I'm giving you the assurance that we won't do the deal.
And this is not a matching grant?
No.
Madam President.
Ms. Jamie Darris?
I do have a question in, on the first page back. Have you reviewed this grant, all in all, because it says, "In order to finalize your acceptance of this award, please review the terms and conditions." I'm concerned that people haven't reviewed the terms and conditions. Special grant conditions, assurances, reporting requirements, have you seen this grant at all?
I personally have not, but we will, we will look at those terms and do that before we do the deal.
I really wish we would have gotten a copy of it, though, so we could have seen it also. I don't know how rested you feel, but I really would have liked to read this grant.
To me, it's like, you know, once burned, twice shy. And again, we're getting this, it's got to be completed and just signed by August 1st, a couple of days. The last time we did that, we found out all kinds of problems. And that is the reason that I'm very concerned. And I guess the other thing, if you go by, I would like to know what happened to the, how that five-year plan is working, because if I look at this page, it looks like we're going to purchase five new vehicles in the summer of 2017?
No, it's meant to show that we're purchasing these three vehicles, and then the vehicles that they already have get rotated to other uses, either ones are retirement, and two of them are rotated to spares.
Well, down, this first, okay, there's three up here.
Yeah.
Okay, and then down below, it says, "Purchased in summer 2017, $20,017 with insurance."
Oh, that's the police vehicles.
I'm sorry, what?
You're looking at the police vehicle section?
Oh, okay, so it's just this one up here?
Right.
Okay. I still, my question still is, I think my question still is pertinent, because I have been going on and on, ad nauseam, about five-year plans. And, you know, when I looked at this, and, okay, so we've got two more with the police, one more with the building and zoning, and I'm thinking, okay, in the summer of 2017, we're looking to buy six vehicles. I know this is the year of the fire, I'm just, but I'm just saying, when I looked at this, and I was like, are you kidding me? Where does this come in with the five-year plan?
Well, as you recall, we put that spreadsheet together several weeks ago as a placeholder, because it only goes out one year. It's really just this fiscal year we're in. I wanted to snapshot in June of what vehicles we had that were either patrol cars or, you know, command vehicles, not fire trucks, type vehicles, more heavy vehicles, just to see what the snapshot was, and what the various departments that had vehicles wanted to do. That sheet is what I passed out to you several weeks ago, and it's been updated to reflect this plan, so that the, it is, the fire department's plan is different than it was several weeks ago. And the only other change on that is that the second police vehicle, it says, "Possible purchase in 2017," I don't think it says the summer, maybe it does.
Oh, you're right.
Possible if grant money is, can come up with it.
You're right, you're right.
There is no money in the budget to buy any police vehicles. And Chief, Chief Blakely has bought his one vehicle on insurance money, and he's just identifying a need, and that if he can find grant money, we'll pursue it. So, but your first question was about five-year plans, so I have.
Are you getting, is it, you're making progress on it?
Yes, I have received, as of the, I think the 15th or 17th was the date that I wanted drafts in, I've gotten drafts from the vast majority of the departments, with a couple outliers. And we now have, you know, I got a very good plan from the DPW that I'm using as a template, and actually have now scheduling one-on-one meetings with each of the departments to go over what their plans are. But just to manage your expectations, it'll take a while before I'm ready to show you a first draft of those, because I have to work through each department and sort of standardize what you're seeing.
No, that's fine. I mean, a while, though, I thought at one point you had said like August or September.
August or September for me to get them, for me to understand, sit down, talk with them, and then reformat them, so there's something for you.
Because I do not want to have the same problems that we had. We'll have, I'm sure we're going to continue to have problems with the Budget Committee, and we'll probably have different ones to replace the ones that we fixed. But I still would like to see some replacement and getting some kind of a plan going on. And so, when I look at this, and it's like, I look at, you know, this is, this is news to me, two months ago, I knew there was a plan that we, the chief needed a new car, and the fire marshal needed a new car. And then all of a sudden, it seems like, oh, now we really need to get, now we need this top-of-the-line car, and we need to get this, and we need to get it done quick.
Well.
And that's, that's when I, you know, before I said, okay, okay, this time, you know, yeah, okay, I got you, I got you. But it just keeps happening. And it's kind of like, I don't know if people are understanding that we have problems with budgets, and top-of-the-line stuff, and it's just like, it's just, it's very frustrating.
Well, I do appreciate your concern, and I do appreciate, but what I don't have an answer to is what anyone may have said to you, or whatever promises or misstatements were made in the past. Wasn't here to hear them.
I understand that.
But what we're trying to do here is, top-of-the-line vehicles for our public safety, I think, should be our goal, always.
Yes, yes. Our goal.
Our goal, and what I, well, if the, if the opportunity presents itself, where at no extra cost to the taxpayer, to me, that is an opportunity to be seized, and.
And I guess that's where I have difficulty believing. I would like to believe.
You don't believe in the free lunch?
No, no.
Ms. Jamie Darris?
The only thing that does concern me about this whole process was when we were doing the budget, we asked the fire chief, "Is there any grants that you have that could help us with this car?" And he said, "No." And then all of a sudden, we told him he couldn't have the big car, and he found a grant that he's had since 2011. Then all of a sudden, "Oh, yeah, we can use this grant, when maybe we could have used this grant to offset the car purchase and ask less from the taxpayer." Do you know what I mean?
Counselor, that is absolutely true.
You know, and I'm looking backwards, and I know, but we have to try and avoid things like this in the future, and we have to. And we've talked about it, we need to know all the grants that are out there, all the grants that we've accepted, all the money that's there and what purpose they're for, because maybe we could offset capital before we go to the taxpayers instead of after.
Madam President.
Can I speak to that? Apologize.
Do you have anything further?
No, go ahead.
Sorry.
Proceed.
I can kind of speak to that briefly. The meds fund is not a grant. So, when, I wasn't present for any of that, but I know that when the chief was asked if there was a grant available, the meds fund is not a grant. It is money that was put into an account after a service was provided, when we worked with the EMA back in 2007. It wasn't a grant, it was money, it's actually pre-stated.
Madam President, but that wasn't.
Captain, I realize that, but we actually, it wasn't just about the grants, and I know you weren't there.
Okay, 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 well, the word "grant" was used.
But we did look at those accounts and ask about those accounts.
Sure.
But I realize you weren't there.
Madam President, if I, just to.
Ms. McRavy?
What maybe the captains aren't aware of, but certainly I've sent it to the department heads, where I have asked them to provide me an inventory of grants and other non-appropriated money, quote-unquote, "grants." So, we may use grants as a, for my purposes, we may use it as shorthand, but the database that I'm trying to create to get right to the counselor's comment was, what money is off-budget, where is it sitting, how can we use it, and when can we use it? So, I want to answer the same question that you want to answer, and I absolutely agree with you. So, we're working towards that. That notwithstanding, I don't think we can stop operations of government and take advantage of, not take advantage of something like this that came up for the purposes of getting one of our public safety agencies excellent equipment. That's what I'm trying to do here.
Question, Madam President.
Mr. Perry?
Paul, if there's any money left over from these grants, can it be put back into the general fund?
Well, let's, let's just take the meds, the meds case. I believe, from what the treasurer told me today, there's $25,000 or so in the meds fund. We would, in this proposal, if you accept it, we'd be using about $12,000 to buy this vehicle, leaving the balance of $13,000 or so. It's, if you read the letters that are in here from Department of Health of what it could be used for, what I like to try to do is find out, in the current fire department budget, what is in there that this $12,000, $13,000 could be used, thus freeing up $13,000 that could be moved with your approval to something else. But I need to sit down with the chief and say.
Because I'm sure we're going to have to buy a trailer for the ATV we just got, because how are you going to get it to and from where you need it?
Actually, my understanding is he already has a trailer.
Ms. Hilton?
So, on the one hand, first of all, congratulations to the fire department on getting a grant, because I think that, I think grants are great. Although, to reiterate the point, I do think, and I'll say this again, that the council and administrator should have a policy on grants, so we know what people are applying for, and grants of certain types should require some level of approval and all that other stuff, nonetheless. It's great that you got $41,000. However, you know, to reiterate Counselor Jamie Darris's concerns, and I went and I looked at the grant application, now I can't see this year's, the grant application from the year that this one went in, because it's offline, but I can see the current one. And as is with most grant applications, my concern is, there's a narrative that goes with this grant application. There's a, there's a description of a project, and what you're going to do, and what equipment you need, and that's all part of the grant application. So, the project, and all I know about it, is it says, "Critical Response Transportation," and the equipment is command first response vehicle. I don't know enough to know, but until I actually personally saw the grant narrative and described what exactly the plan for this was, that we told the federal government that we were going to do with this vehicle, and what equipment was required into it, in it, and what it would be available for, leaned it for, as a counselor, I vote on that, I would really want to see that and make sure that whatever vehicle we're getting absolutely matches what we told the federal government we needed the money for. So, that's one thing I'd really like to see. And I would like to know about what the reporting requirements, the information contained in Section 2 of, or paragraph, I'm sorry, paragraph 3 of the letter. The next question I have on this is about the accounting. As best I can tell, it looks like each of these two new trucks, unless they're different, is they're each $38,000?
Yes, 38.
That's.
And are they identical?
They're identical, they're actually priced the same, for the purposes of the money flow, one will cost us 41, the other will cost the balance. That's why the numbers don't add up that way, but they're exactly the same-priced vehicle.
Well, so let me ask, but I'm a little worried about that. If they're identical, and one is costing 41, and one is costing 38, there's clearly a reason we're doing that. And that reason, I got to tell you, makes me a little uncomfortable.
Well, I mean, the reason would be we got a grant for 41,000 that we need to spend on a vehicle.
And it's reimbursable, so we're, because it's not a, they're not giving us a lump sum on this grant, we've got to submit a reimbursement on this. But what that also does, though, is it now puts, it puts one of these vehicles, not necessarily the command vehicle that's coming out of the grant money, but it's now making the chief's car, which although we're paying for it out of the meds grant, substantially more than we budgeted for and set aside for. Nor am I really sure, I mean.
At the grossest le.
One of these vehicles, one of these vehicles, it is attached to a grant in a specific, in specific language in a grant. The other vehicle is the chief's car, and we had a discussion about whether or not the chief's car, while it needs to be a high-quality car, needs to have all the same level of electronics or those kinds of things, because.
These two vehicles will be identical, they could be swapped out. So, and that's the logic of buying two identical vehicles. There is the need to make one, for the purposes of the grant, $41,000, the other the balance. But clearly, the taxpayers and the Budget Committee only approved $26,000 plus 14. We are spending $138,000, but at no extra cost to the taxpayer. So, this is way above, without a doubt, what was put into the budget for purchases of vehicles. But if, if, you know, just, you know, based on my relatively short time looking at this, I don't think command vehicles can be bought for $26,000, or a decent vehicle that's not so incredibly used and will be in Bill Anderson's repair shop for $14,000. The chief's new police car is costing $26,000, with insurance money. And that's just a squad car, that's just a, you know, a Dodge.
I still, I would still like to see the grant application, and I'd still like to be comfortable in working two identical cars, and we're going to submit a receipt for $41,000, and the other one is not, you're going to be paying exactly, we're getting exactly the same thing, and it's not going to cost as much that we're doing this completely in a way that's above board, and we're okay on that? And my last question, and this is to Joe's point, is you read the narrative of all of this, and I will say one thing, as the former chair of the Conservation Commission, I am a little uncomfortable, because I really, the Conservation Commission did not ever request that the fire department acquire an ATV vehicle. There was a discussion about a plan for a fire plan for Luton Woods, should there ever been a fire, but there was never a request from the Conservation Commission that the fire department purchased an ATV vehicle.
Please, you might.
Purchased an ATV vehicle.
I can accept that, I'm going to sort of look into that view, but that's not what we're asking to do tonight.
No, but it's, this is part of the, in the letter narrative of all of the support for this. So, that brings me to my next question. In this letter of support narrative, there is a discussion about both these vehicles now needing to be able to pull a trailer, and specifically the meds trailer. So, I understand that both these vehicles are really heavy-duty, and they've got the gross vehicle weight to do it, right? But will then they need to have hitches added, and additional braking, you know, trailer brakes, and all those kinds of things added in order to do that?
I think they come with.
Okay, so, a couple of things here. The vehicles will have, these are the specialty service vehicles, so they've got the bigger brake.